Meeting. It is Tuesday, June 9th, and it is 6:33 PM. Members present, Branitowski, Bum Gardner, Franco, Heed, Aubrey, Bordelon, Melendez, and Zepari. Counselor Parker is absent as she has a family obligation this evening. Counselor Bum Gardner, would you like to move the special meeting minutes, please?
Andrea, you're muted.
I apologize.
Counselor Bum Gardner, excuse me.
Okay, I'll make a motion to revert the January 28 special meeting minutes.
Second Bordelon.
Moved by Bum Gardner, seconded by Bordelon. Any discussion on the minutes from this? This is the January 28, 2020 meeting. Okay, I see no hands. All those in favor of approval of the minutes of January 28, 2020, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I think it was. Wasn't it May 28? May 26?
One second. Oh, yeah, the date on this says January 28th. No, that is correct, January 28th. The minutes are from January 28th. The prior meeting to that was May 16th, Counselors Zepari. So then, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? We're moved unanimously with eight counselors on approval of the minutes. We're on to the public hearing. This is room numeral three on your agenda. And Mr. Burt has agreed to read the call to hearing. This is 2023 67 Amendment to Ordinance Number 239, Sections 13-1 and 13-4, public hearing. Mr. Burt?
And I'd like to first, just for anyone having any confusion, that this is first be prior to the call meeting. We are currently in the Groton Resource Recovery Authority meeting. That's why the minutes were from January 28th. I want to point that out. Legal notice, Town of Groton, Groton Resource Recovery Authority, Amendment to Ordinance Number 239, Sections 13-1 and 13-4. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing before the Groton Resource Recovery Authority of the Town of Groton for the purposes of amending ordinance number 239, Sections 13-1 and 13-4, to incorporate the addition of the Lisbon Wheelbrader Facility, as was authorized by Amendment Number 5 to the Southeastern Connecticut Regional Resource Recovery Authority, SCARA Municipal Services Agreement between SCARA and the Town of Groton, will be held virtually via the Zoom platform on June 9, 2020, at 6:30 PM. A Zoom meeting link will be posted to the town's website meetings calendar. At this hearing, all parties shall have the opportunity to be heard concerning the proposed amendment to ordinance number 239, Sections 13-1 and 13-4. A copy of the proposed amendment to ordinance number 239, Sections 13-1 and 13-4, is on file in the Groton Town Clerk's Office, Fort Hill, 45 Fort Hill Road, and in the Public Works Department of said Town of Groton, Groton Long Point Road, and are available for inspection by the public during business hours.
Thank you, Mr. Burt. I believe Ms. Leach is here from the Public Works Department, and if she'd like to offer any insight at this point. Ms. Leach, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just a formality to amend the ordinance to include the Wheelbrader site, which we'll start going to in January 2021. So that's the only item that we have on the agenda for today, and that's the only action that we're taking.
Thank you. Mr. Burt, I don't have notice of anyone signed up to speak. Do you have notice of anyone signed up to speak?
I do not.
Thank you. I will ask, is anyone here to speak on the Groton Resource Recovery Authority item? All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing. I'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting of the GRRA.
So moved, Heed.
Second Bordelon.
Moved to adjourn by Heed, seconded by Bordelon. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously with eight counselors. The GRRA meeting is adjourned at 6:37. Thank you very much. All right. Can we go right on, Mr. Greeley? Mr. Burt, can we proceed?
Now, you did the motion to come out of the public hearing. Did you do the motion to adopt?
All we have on the amendment was the public hearing. My agenda just has the public hearing on it.
Okay, they'll do it. Stacy, can you confirm that we'll have another GRRA meeting to adopt? Or was the intent to adopt at this meeting?
I don't know if she's there.
Is she still there?
I don't think so. Let me look. Yeah, the agenda only said this is a public hearing only, Mr. Burt.
Okay. So we'll assume there'll be another one upcoming. Okay.
Very good. So then, are we ready to move right into the call? Or do we need time for Mr. Greeley to take care of things?
Mr. Greeley, are you there? I think if we're not pausing, I think you can go right into it. It's being recorded.
There's been enough time, I think, if he needed to do something, that he could go ahead in. All right, good evening. It is Tuesday, June 9th. We are here for the Town Council Committee of the Whole Regular Meeting. All counselors present, with the exception of Counselor Parker, who has a family obligation this evening, so we are at eight counselors. Calendar and communications. We can go in alphabetical, or we can go according to where we used to sit. I'll go according to where we used to sit, so as not to throw anybody off. Counselor Bum Gardner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This weekend, I attended probably the most powerful showing of community that I have ever personally witnessed in Groton, and that includes many moving experiences I've had in Groton throughout my lifetime. But, you know, first and foremost, would like to thank the incredible, passionate, and brilliant, and just amazing young people that organized what was a peaceful protest and march in both the town and city of Groton this past weekend. Thousands of individuals throughout our community and surrounding towns participated to highlight the importance of combating police brutality and ridding our world of racism and racial oppression in our country. And so, our town manager informed me that we will be speaking with our Chief of Police to discuss use of force policies and procedures at our next, at a future council meeting on June 23rd. So I very much look forward to that conversation and heeding President Obama's calls to review, engage, and report and reform our police, our use of force policies. So again, thank you so much to our young people for organizing. I stand with you. I stand in solidarity with you. And I might be remiss if I didn't say that all lives matter until Black Lives Matter. And I'm so proud to stand with the council that shares that, shares that view. So thank you, everyone, for coming out, and nothing further to say.
Thank you, Counselor Bum Gardner. Counselor Franco?
Hi, thank you. I was also able to attend the historic Black Lives Matter March this past week in Groton, and I found the march to be inspiring and enlightening. And I think, most importantly, I listened and I learned. And now I hope to work with my colleagues on the council to bring about any changes that will help create transparency, fairness, and equality to policies and actions in our Town of Groton. And I would like to commend Counselor Parker for her speech she gave at the march on the steps of the City Municipal Building. It was heartfelt, and it was moving. I have received many communications from residents of interest. The Rzana Kowalski letter to town officials has been brought to my attention numerous times. A resident at the march had approached me, who expressed her feelings about the letter from Ms. Kowalski. And I would like to state that sometimes we make mistakes. It's understandable, and I have made mistakes myself. So I condemned the letter and found the contents to be disturbing, objectionable, and insensitive to our community. And I am Black Lives Matter, and I am already here in Groton. So, and with that, I am eager to hear from Chief Azaro at our June 23 meeting related to President Obama's local government initiatives for us to review for our community. And I'd like to thank Counselor Bum Gardner for bringing this forward. Changing gears, I would like to express my desire to have town staff who are helping our community deal with COVID-related issues come speak at our council meeting soon. Particularly, I would like to hear from Human Services and how our town is dealing with food insecurities and economic development, and how they are assisting businesses during our most stressed, this most stressful time. And with that being said, I want the public to know that I have sent an email to all counselors asking for items not related to priority town business, COVID, and the civil rights movement be postponed as we deal with the crisis that are facing our town, state, and our nation. And I hope to get support from my fellow counselors. I think as a council, it is wise to adjust our agenda to deal with changes that are going on around us. And lastly, I'd like the public to know that I will not be attending the additional meetings that I normally attend as a liaison, a member, or a chair outside of council, as my father has been diagnosed with stage four cancer in this past week, and we will, and I have family obligations that I will be dealing with. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Counselor Franco. I'm sorry to hear that with your father, and I wish you and your family the best. Counselor Heed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was also able to protest, or participate in protests this past week in Mystic that was organized by the Rise Up Organization. And the march on Sunday, which was organized by the Fitch High School students. Whoops, did I take myself off mute? Let me make sure. Okay, great. Yeah, so I just wanted to thank the students for organizing the march. There were, according to the paper, over a thousand people who came, and it was positive. It was energetic. There was someone from every corner of our community. I saw people from the RTM, from the local Republican Party. I saw a number of people who I haven't seen in a very long time, although it was hard to recognize people with all the masks on. But it was, it was inspiring, to say the least. And I'm looking forward to this being an issue that everybody in town can embrace, regardless of party, and make sure that we continue to make this a priority. For example, this year, both the council and the RTM voted overwhelmingly to support diversity training at a time when, when we're facing economic challenges with the COVID-19 pandemic. We, as a town, made this a priority this year. We didn't cut the funding. We didn't tell anybody, you have to wait. This is not the right time. And I'm really proud of everybody for, for taking that stand. So looking forward to moving forward together on this. Also, changing gears, I did attend an event, food, well, let me, let me just read this. It came from Cindy Olson. She works with our Parks and Rec Department, and she's in our local Groton Rotary Club. And I'll just read the announcement that she sent to me. Groton Senior Center is launching Community First Dinner Program, in which we will be handing out free meals to residents of Groton on Wednesdays and Fridays. We will have three distribution sites, TVCCA on Central Avenue, Charles Barnum Elementary School, and St. John's Christian Church. Meals will be handed out between 4:30 PM and 5:30 PM. So this past Friday, I volunteered to help them hand out food. And the way it works is we hand out food until we're out of food. So come early and bring an appetite. So that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Heed. Counselor Aubrey?
I think everybody's talked about everything that I was participating in. I just want to reiterate, I did not march. These old legs weren't going to do that. But I was at the end. I was very, very impressed with the young people. I was impressed with the teachers that assisted them and the parents. The crowd control was wonderful, and it was just a very moving event. And I look forward to learning more, doing more, and, but I think, I think Groton is really still a very wonderful place to live. I know there are problems, and we'll try to correct those, but this is a good place. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Aubrey. Counselor Bordelon?
Thank you. A lot of, lot of things were already said, but I would have to say that I too was moved by the event, as a black female, growing up here in Groton, to see people turn out like that meant a lot to me, meant a lot to my family, and I'm sure it meant a lot to other people in the community. But there's more work to be done. Showing up and marching is one thing, action is another. To the students who, you know, put this event together, hats off. Outstanding job to you guys to bring such a passionate issue to our community to light even further than it already has been, and take a stand for what's right in this town and what needs to change. I, I joined the council, and one of my reasons I got involved in politics about three years ago was to see representation in our community that looked like myself and my family. Growing up here, I never really did see that. Groton does have a long way to go. Growing up here, there was barely any minority teachers throughout the district, very few minority police, especially in the Town of Groton. The change that I'm going to be working towards and helping, because I heard the cries, the concerns, the will, the wants, the needs of our community, the desire of my own children who say, when am I going to have a black teacher? Where's the minorities? For Groton to really move forward, our demographics have to represent the community in which it serves. And we are a very diverse community, yet from our municipality building to our public school system, which is a public school system, as well as our police department in the town and other parts of our sectors here, we can do better, and we have to want to do better. I'm looking forward to coming up with a plan to make a decision on how long we keep these positions open when we're minority recruiting. I, I think that we need to know more information from a council. The one thing I heard was, what are you elected people doing? What are you guys doing to make a difference? Well, I heard it, and that's one of the things that people love about me, and that's some things that some people say I talk too much. Well, here you go. I have been calling for this since I got on. I brought forth several years ago, getting the bilingual ballot, and then when I got on the council, I made it a priority, and my counselors supported that, and that is now moving forward. With that, I think we really need to look at this minority recruiting, and looking at open positions, and how long we're leaving these positions open, and what is our due diligence in hiring them? I'd like to see our statistics, what's our rate of number of hires, to really make sure that we are looking at the whole package here and not filling the position. Also, looking at excessive force, looking at brutality. Yes, Groton, you know, people say, things haven't happened here. We got the one-to-one cameras. We can't say it hasn't happened here. We don't know that it hasn't happened here ever. We just may not have had video. So to truly understand, we have to accept that people have been feeling like they were wrongly mistreated in a lot of different communities throughout southeastern Connecticut. I also think there needs to be a review group, review board in our town. It can't just be elected officials. We can't just have town manager and people that are all part of the whole gamut of our budget and fiscal responsibility of the town to totally be reviewing this. I think we need to have an outside agency coming in that has no connection or, or to the community, and is reviewing these in a timely manner, and is making sure that we're keeping track of incidents towards police municipalities and brutality. These are things that need to be done for change to truly happen. People need to be felt, feel that they are being treated fairly, and that their desires, wants, needs, and concerns are being heard, but also that the way that they are being treated in this community is no different than anybody else in the town from one side of town to the other. One of the other things that I heard today, the other day, was excessive policing in areas where people tend to think, and I'll say, where there's higher police presence because, for whatever reason, why in some town, some areas, it's higher, and others, it's not. It's not fair to have excessive in one area and not in another. So with that, I stand with everyone, and I'm going to be doing my due diligence. I've asked the questions. I've been asking at the end of meetings and said, yep, we're minority recruiting. We have to make change. We have to make this town look like our community. My goal also is to look towards getting some minorities represented on the Board of Ed, to truly represent the constituents in this town. We need people that look like the community, and that's the cry that people want. And that's the cry I heard, and it's the cry that I had for why I got involved. To Counselor Park, Franco, my deepest sympathy to your family as a breast cancer survivor. I'm here for you if you need anything. I watched my family deal with what is, went, went on with me, and that was harder for me to take than my own cancer. So if you need an ear, or a help, or let the dog out, or anything, I stand with you, and I support your family during this tough time, because you guys are headed in a tough direction, and I wish you guys sincerely all the best. I really do think that we should be looking at everything in this town, and I think having a review board is the most important thing at this time. So that's all I have to say today. I did attend one of the, I'm losing all my train of thought, because I was so passionately about the Black Lives Matter. But it's, it's, it's important that we come up with a plan in this town, and we can't continue to dismiss it, or look over it, or rush the process and say, yep, yep, we've been minor recruiting. How are you guys doing it? Oh, no one's applying. We need a plan. Thank you.
Counselor Melendez?
Yes, I too marched and protested this, this weekend. And honestly, I've, I've lived here my whole life, and I've never felt more connected to my, to my town. It was just an amazing feeling. The, the high school students who put that on, I mean, I wish I had the courage that they had at that age, and, and it just gives me a lot of hope for the future of Groton. I hope, you know, in five years, they're, they're running for, for this council here in the RTM. And I think if they're, if they do that, if they keep that, that passion and that courage, I think Groton, Groton's future is going to be bright. I was also able to sit in on a Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee meeting, which was formerly comprised of mainly town staff, and, and at this last meeting, they decided to open it up to council, council members, and I'm really excited about that. I know we're, we're all gonna, you know, participate, and, and I'm just excited for the things that we'll, we'll accomplish there.
And Counselors Zepari?
I also did not march in the demonstration on Sunday. People who know me know that I have a great deal of difficulty walking, and even walking from a parked car and for any distance to a place where I could sit at the side and participate in the meeting would be difficult. I, I'd like to look at the bright side of Groton. The people of Groton elected four people of color to the council. And that tells me that the majority of the people in Groton have cleared their racial prejudices and are willing to have themselves represented by people of color. We still have a way to go with some people and the hatred that's in their spirits, and it's not only Caucasians or whites that have hatred. People of all races seem to identify with their race and adopt an attitude or a perspective that they are, the world is against them individually. I think some white Anglo-Saxon males may feel that way. But I, I, I think that what we have to do in leadership is to try to get together with our people and encourage conversation so that we can change the attitudes, or at least affect the attitudes, and open the minds of some people who are closed to recognizing the value of everyone. I think Martin Luther King strove for that through his time in public life, and I think we should follow his lead. I, I, I think that the current demonstrations about black people being killed unnecessarily in police actions are justified. But I think we have to go beyond that and get to the root of the problem, and that's the attitude of it's us versus them that's so deep in so many people. To the attitude, I need someone to look down on because my life is not so good, and you arbitrarily choose a group to, to look down on. I, I would like to see us work on that, and I also support some of the reforms that people are coming up with to assure that police procedures take more care to preserve the lives of the people they're arresting. So I, I think that there's, there's a great deal to celebrate as good. I think that our society locally has made tremendous progress, and we ought to recognize that and appreciate the people who are involved in that.
Counselor Bordelon, do you have further communications before I speak?
Yeah, I've had one thing I forgot. I apologize. One of the things, I didn't see it posted on our Human Service page, and I will pass these communications on to that. Maybe they can post it on the website. There is something out there going around. I'm part of the Ledge Light Health District, Health Inequalities Program, Community Ambassador Program, and there's something called a P EBT. It's a pandemic electronic benefit transfer. There's information online about it. It talks about if you qualify for free or reduced lunch. So maybe a person who qualifies for free lunch, I mean, reduced lunch, but does not qualify for the traditional SNAP program. What they're doing here, there's a whole list, and it says that you receive a card, and you can access it, and they will be putting money on to compensate for the loss of meals and what have you. But I will pass these communications forward. There's something out there going around about it, and it might be something that someone is not aware of and needs, and I think it's important to know. And it's called, it's called a P EBT, and they're calling it a, once again, and it's in multiple language, which is awesome, pandemic electronic benefits transfer. So look for this. I will pass it on if they don't already have it. I did not see it posted. Thanks.
Thank you. Perhaps Human Services could post that on their webpage. Thank you. Counselor Heed, do you also have further communications before I speak?
Yes, I had two things. I believe the count right now for knowing gardens, the, the number of letters that I've received is about 79. Just wanted to get that out there. And then the other thing was kind of a question for manager town, John Burt. We received the conservation, Plan of Conservation by email today, and I was wondering if there would be a presentation on that later. You're still muted, John.
I'm sure there will be. We'll, we'll schedule that.
Thank you. Start off with more mundane, normal things. Reacted to, responded to a couple of constituent complaints. Counselor Melendez and I, in particular, dealt with something up in his neighborhood. I was honored to march in the peaceful protest on Sunday. Does a teacher's heart good to see young people being active and being able to fulfill their goals? And their goal was to bring the people of Groton together and to hold a peaceful march, and they were successful, and I'm thrilled that they were successful. And it's a credit to their mentors, their advisors, it's a credit to them, and it's a credit to the community that we were all able to pull together and work together to express ourselves and to show what so many of you have said, that we are all one community, and we want to work together to make Groton even better than we already are. One such way to do that is through this group called DEI, Diversity, Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, that Counselor Melendez spoke of. And it's been something that the manager put in place, and it's been mainly focused on town staff and training town staff, but now we're looking to move it further and spread that into the community. And as such, the council will become more active with that. We also, we already have a counselor who's willing to take on a project for that. But you should be seeing more and hearing more about that in the future. So thank you, everybody who came out and supported the young women. And onward and upward, better things. We are on to approval of minutes. Item number four, 2020 379, May 26, 2020 minutes. Counselor Baumgartner, do you want to take this or you want me to go on to the next counselor? We can go on to, let's see.
Good. I have no problem reading them.
Okay. Just asking you to move approval of the minutes.
No problem. I'll make a motion to approve the committee of the whole.
May 26.
Yes, my agenda is not loaded when I click the, there we go. I'll make a motion to approve the May 26, 2020 meeting minutes.
Second Bordelain.
Moved by Baumgartner and seconded by Bordelain. Any discussion on the minutes? Hey, yep, Counselor Obray.
I said, I guess they got it right.
Okay. All right. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of approval of 2020 379, May 26, 2020 minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. Thank you. We are on to our first item of new business. This is acceptance of open space Briar Hill subdivision. This is on page 13 in your packet. And we are on, Counselor Franco, please.
Recommend a resolution to accept point two, three acres of land at the Briar Hill Road subdivision for park, open space and recreational purposes. I so move.
Second heed.
Moved by Franco and seconded by heed. Mr. Burris, Mr. Reiner, here to speak to this?
Yes, Deb was here earlier. I think she has another meeting at the same time, though, so I think John will be speaking.
Thank you, Mr. Reiner. You have the floor.
Thank you, John. Good evening, John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. This is a small piece of open space, point two, three acres of land at the end of Briar Hill Road for Briar Hill Road subdivision. It was approved by the Planning Commission, and we recommend that you accept this small piece. It does connect to a piece of deep open space.
Thank you, Mr. Reiner. Do any counselors have questions on this particular item? Counselor Obray?
Yes. Will it be mocked in any way so that people know that they could have access from that point?
I believe that there is, the trail was, there was actually a trail there that was inspected and approved by Parks and Rec and the Planning and Zoning Commission approved. So I believe that there actually is a sign up at that entranceway. I can double check on that, though, but I do believe we usually require a certain marking at all of these little trailheads.
Okay, thank you.
Give me one second, please. Okay, Counselor Heed and then Counselor Bordelain.
I intend on supporting this, but my question to Mr. Bert is what happens if we don't accept this piece of lands?
That's probably a better pursuit for John. It's a, it's part of our regulations that they can either do monetary donation or land. John, what would happen if we turned it down?
Then it would remain private open space. It's something that's a requirement of the subdivision regulations and the zoning process that they donate a piece of property instead of, there's other options that can do through the development process. So this is something that we require them to do. So it would, I think it would be a little strange if we didn't accept it.
Mr. Reiner, is that something that would have to be determined before the project went forward? That they would they would say upfront whether they were going to give money or give the open space? Is that when it would be appropriate to raise that question?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Counselor Bordelain.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask, so all the checks on this land, is it's appropriate and to be used in this manner? Or there's no, there's been no roadblocks thus far that we know of with moving this that way?
No, no. Again, this was a four lot subdivision that was approved almost five years ago. And it just took some time for it to get to this point. But again, Parks and Rec has reviewed this. They approved, they inspected the trail, and it's something that'll be a nice connection to that deep open space property. Again, it's not a very big piece of property, you know, about a quarter of an acre. So it's pretty small.
Counselor Baumgartner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Hey, John. Just a quick question about where the trail connects to in the, in our agenda packet. It states that the trail, so the developer was required to construct a trail on the open space parcel. So does that connect directly to the deep protected land?
Yes, it does. Yeah, as you can see, I think it's the second page of that attachment. There's a map that indicates where the deep property is. There, I think some of the confusion might be there's some lines there that show it's actually like the indication of a old stone wall, I think, on the property.
So is that really the only, because the deep property, really, if you, I mean, the only access point that would be public to that site would be the elementary school, right? So would that now be the kind of the best access point for the deep site? To, you know, to that protected open space?
I think there's actually also access off of Gunji Wamp Road.
There is.
Yeah, when you look at the access of where that property goes, it actually goes all around Charles Barnum School of that piece of property.
Great. All right. Thank you to your office for this work. Thank you.
Yep. And I stand corrected, there is not currently a sign out there indicating where that trail is. If that's something that the council is looking for, we can certainly look into that and work with Parks and Recreation on getting a little monument out there so that it's clear that it is an open space trail.
I'd be supportive of that.
I'm sure Public Works, you know, we do our own signs. Public Works can put something up, I'm sure. We can get with them.
Yep.
Thank you. That would be good.
Okay.
I think it would be great as well.
Counselor Franco.
Hi, John. I'm looking at the map and it's sort of hard to see. I see the property outlined in red. And it looks as though there's a property 124 next to it. And I can't tell very, it's really hard to see, but it looks like that property goes behind the trail. See a line that shows the Charles Barnum School, so it goes straight into the deep property?
Yes, it goes straight into the deep property. That secondary line behind that lot that's listed as 124 is actually the, like, the outline of an old stone wall that may or may not still be there. So a lot of these maps you'll see, so even if you look at like the Charles Barnum, you can see where there's a line going through. And then across the deep property, you'll see another line shooting, not quite perpendicular, maybe at about a 30 degree angle off of that line. And it ends where the word school is, that right there is also showing what was probably a stone wall at one point in time or the remnants of one.
Okay, so property 124 does not go behind that trail. Goes aside, but not behind it.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think, sorry, AI.
Counselor Obray.
John, I I think this is the property that used to be the Boy Scout camp and the state ended up with it. Used to be a huge Boy Scout camp on that land.
It is on the east side. I've hiked that a few times, on the east side of the lake.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Mayor Granitowski?
Yes.
Yes, to to answer Counselor Obray's question, that property was taken over by the state. And it's now deep property. So that where the, it was the YMCA, they had a.
YMCA, thank you.
Deep is now the steward of that that property.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, I see no further discussion, so we will vote on 2020 372, acceptance of open space Briar Hill subdivision. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously, eight in favor, zero opposed. I apologize for the very loud motorcycle.
That's my son.
Okay, we are on to 2020 377 Baker's Cove. This is on page 15. And I believe Ms. Roby is with us. Would you like to give background, Mr. Bert, or should we just turn it straight over to Ms. Roby?
Um, oh, let's go ahead and turn it over to her.
Very good. Ms. Roby, you have the floor.
Okay, so could you put up the PowerPoint? I think that would be helpful to.
Mr. Bert, you have it, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can you see it?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your time. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Mara Roby. And I work for Eastern Connecticut Conservation District. And I am a watershed coordinator for the Baker Cove Watershed Committee. As one of my duties, and I'm here on behalf of the committee. If you haven't heard of ECCD, we're a nonprofit natural resource conservation organization. And we really focus a lot on water quality. And we have a lot of activities that we do, some of which are listed here to help assist towns and residents in our 36 municipalities in Eastern Connecticut. And as I said, we promote best management practices to improve water quality. Next slide.
John?
So the Baker Cove Watershed Base Plan was written by ECCD in 2011. And it was also written with input from many stakeholders, including folks from the city and town and also in a lot of other environmental organizations. And so what, one of the things was that found was that Baker Cove was impaired for direct shellfish consumption where it's permitted. And that's due to elevated levels of fecal coliform bacteria. That is listed in the Connecticut Deep Integrated Water Quality Reporting for the last, going back to 2008. So there are a lot of sources of non-point source pollution. And some of the things found were water fowl, urban stormwater, discharges from boating, pet waste, and other pollutants from residents. And so the plan has a number of recommendations to carry out strategies to try to reduce that fecal coliform. Can go to the next slide. So this is just to give you an idea of the location. There are three watersheds outlined in blue that drain into the cove. And actually, I added a fourth one there at the bottom by the airport that we have since recognized. Since the plan was written, the Quonic River, part of the Quonic River watershed does obviously drain into Baker Cove as well. And then we're still researching whether that other section to the, east of the airport is is contributing as well. So I just wanted you to have this so you know the location that I'm talking about. You can go to the next slide. So because we're trying to reduce fecal coliform for that impact shellfish, this is just a map of the area with the prohibited in red, currently prohibited for shellfishing. And the light green is restricted relay, and the dark green areas are additional restricted relay. So just an idea of the area around Baker Cove. So looking to try to have a goal of reopening to recreational shellfishing, that would only be seasonal. And of course, working with the Department of Agriculture, Bureau of Aquaculture, along with the Shellfish Commission and the airport as well, to see if that would be feasible. The next slide. So the Baker Cove Watershed Base Plan, this is just an example of some of those recommended strategies to reduce non-point source pollution. So you have some very specific locations, strategies, priorities, you know, who's responsible and and then probable costs for any future work that folks want to do. So that is just one particular page from that. Go to the next slide. And some of the strategies from the plan that have been done so far. Tree filters have been added to the Groton, City of Groton Municipal Complex and also some signage. You can go to the next slide. The, in 2018, your very own Andre Baumgartner helped with planting, he's on the far right, with planting 450 square foot rain garden at the Community Services Building. Now, this was not specifically in the Baker Cove Watershed Base Plan, but it is something that the Baker Cove Committee has in, has in our plan of work to install more rain gardens and riparian buffers and things that can help with infiltrating pollutants. And the next slide. So also, a grant was applied for in 2017 through Connecticut Deep. So we had a project from 2017 to 2019 to look at the resident Canada geese issues that are within a five to six mile radius of Baker Cove. And there were a number of things that were done. We, I ran that project and had stakeholder meetings. We did goose surveys to find out where the geese were. We, I had workshops, and this is a fact sheet that was one of the educational components that came out of that. We also created a management matrix, and you can go to the next slide. I'll show you an example of that. So this, again, is just one little part of that matrix showing what's currently being done at particular locations where it, high geese counts were identified. And then current management and potential improvements that can be done. Go to the next slide. So in 2019, one of the things that came out of the Baker Cove Goose Project was to create this Baker Cove Committee and to try to work on additional items that are in the plan as well as anything that basically can help clean up the non-point source pollution. So this is just an example, page one. As you can see, this is a very, it's a very awkward document. It is ongoing, and I put in, recently it's been updated. You can see some things in red there. The items in blue are ones that the committee identified as wanting to work on for 2020. You can go to the next slide. And I just wanted to point out that asking for the resolution is one of our items in the plan of work. Can go to the next slide. So basically, I am here on behalf of the committee to respectfully recommend that the Groton Town Council adopt a resolution to endorse this Baker Cove Watershed Base Plan. We're not asking for money, so I hope that helps the the cause. So we just want to, we think that it will help to show support for this plan to the citizens of the town, to try to work on achieving water quality standards and possibly include restoring Baker Cove to recreational shellfishing. to recreational shellfishing. Um, it helps us when we're seeking grants. Um, we recently just applied for a Long Island Sound Future Fund grant, as probably a lot of folks in the area have. Um, and we are looking to install more rain gardens, um, more riparian buffers, and, uh, pollinator pathways. So kind of have a combined effort, um, way to do that, um, to reduce, again, non-point source pollution. And, um, so we're hoping, um, we are looking forward to, if we get that, potentially working with the, um, or working with the, the town and the city and, and a couple other towns. Um, and I know that the, um, the town's Conservation Commission has, uh, given us an endorsement letter, so it'd be great to, to work with, um, those folks and anyone else that's interested. Um, so, uh, and again, trying to remove the, um, Baker Cove from that, uh, water quality, integrated water quality report, uh, would be another, uh, great outcome. So thank you for your time, and I can take any questions, or if you want to email me later, if you think of them later, that's fine, too.
Counsel, thank you, Ms. Roby. Counselor Heed, please.
All right, yes, I'll make a motion to recommend a resolution approving the endorsement of the Baker Cove Watershed Base Plan. I so move.
Second.
Was that Counselor Zepari?
Yes.
Moved by Heed and seconded by Zepari. All right, so Ms. Roby has offered to take questions at this point, if you would like, and I see Counselor Zepari has his hand up.
I'd just like to congratulate you, Mara, for such a superb report and the work of your committee. Um, I think we, we should support your efforts. I'm glad to see that you're not asking for funding at this time. We're quite concerned about that. Uh, and I think when, when you need funding from the town, it'll have to be decided on an individual basis for each request, but I, I think that, uh, you're moving us in the right direction, and, uh, we wouldn't get there without you. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Just have to give a quick shout out to Grasso Tech students for working with Counselor Baumgartner on that rain garden. Good job. BET. All right, we have Bordelain, and then Heed, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to send my, um, thank you, my, just wanted to thank you for the efforts that you do to improve the health and well-being in our community. Um, a lot, a lot of the research I've done lately surrounding, you know, cancers and things, i- it comes back to the water, and it's important that water is looked at and taken, um, very seriously. So I appreciate all your efforts and work on, on behalf of Groton. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Heed, and then Baumgartner.
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, so I had a, a question. The report, basically, uh, you're focused on, um, reducing fecal matter, uh, in those kinds of runoffs from getting into the water that affect shellfish. Is that, is that, am I reading that correctly?
Uh, that, that is it, what it came out of the Baker Cove Watershed Report from 2011. Yep.
Okay. All right, and maybe this is not related then, but, uh, being, uh, as much as I hate finding plastic trash all over the place, uh, I was wondering if you have any experience, uh, if, if this, we're like, reducing plastic in, in the runoff would, uh, also affect the shellfish population. Thank you.
Uh, I don't have any, um, specific, um, um, examples of that. I don't have any background with that, is what I'm trying to say. Um, but certainly, trash and debris was actually one of the things that was identified. Um, so any kind of trash and debris is going to clog up stormwater basins and things, so definitely, plastic would be included in that. And I know that, that your town is very, um, progressive on the plastic. I believe you have an ordinance now, um, and that's, that's awesome. Um, I commend you all on that, and, um, you know, I don't know as far as, um, leaching of plastic, if that's what you mean, um, that probably might be a good study for somebody at UConn, or they may know more about that. Um, but certainly, we would recommend, yes, to reduce, uh, trash, and that would include plastic, for sure.
All right, Counselor Baumgartner.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, and, um, thank you, Mara, for your wonderful presentation. Um, just for some, um, uh, you know, to provide some background on, on my relationship with Mara. Um, several years ago, um, the Eastern Connecticut Conservation District was installing rain gardens in, um, several of, of our, um, southeastern Connecticut communities, and, um, I was reading a day paper article and noticed that, you know, there are many popping up in Stonington and elsewhere, but I hadn't seen one in Groton. So I've reached out to Mara and ECCD, and, uh, she was so kind to work with, um, John Burt and, uh, the, um, the public, uh, the Department of Public Work Staff to identify a site in the, um, you know, uh, in the town of Groton and on, uh, town property that could accommodate a rain garden. And as, um, Mara showed, um, uh, they chose the site next to the services building, and, um, the image in the PowerPoint showed little seedlings, and, uh, during the, um, the March for Black Lives Matter, um, we actually passed that, that garden on the route, and so as you can see, those tiny, uh-oh. I don't think you can, can you see it? I guess we, we found a flaw in the Zoom technology, but I, I was going to show you an updated, uh, photo. It's not going to work. Uh, yeah, an updated photo of the, of the rain garden, so maybe we'll have to have...
Oh, I'm so excited to see that. Could you please send that to me? Because, uh, we've been meaning to get out and follow up on all of our rain gardens, and that somehow drops to the bottom of the list of all the things that we have to do, and I'm always excited to see how well they come out. And I think I did stop in, like, last year, and, you know, tried to pull a couple weeds here and there, because I, I want it to be successful. So hopefully, it's not too weedy, and, uh, you know, it's working correctly.
Absolutely, and, and to echo, um, Mayor Brenatoski, to, you know, again, our, our big thing goes to the, um, the students at Grasso Tech. They did such an amazing job, and I, and I, I don't think, I, um, especially since we planted those plants so late in the season, I don't think if it were, weren't for their hard work, I, I don't think that garden would, would have been as successful as it is. So thanks again to those students. Um, just quickly, Mara, because, um, I know we, we have a busy agenda tonight, but, um, could you talk to the council about, um, you know, the, although Baker's Cove is confined to a kind of a small area, a nestle between the city and the town, um, development and, and stormwater runoff from areas you wouldn't even, um, imagine, you know, could impact, uh, the Baker's Cove water quality. It has very much impacted, um, including, uh, water, uh, water runoff coming from Long Hill Road, Four Hill, uh, Lot, for example. So could you, uh, kind of talk about some of that, uh, briefly?
Um, well, hopefully you got a chance to, I put up that map, and I, I don't know if you could really tell where, where all those watersheds were coming from, but basically, um, Birch Plain Creek is one of the big ones, and, you know, that comes down from, um, Big Y and, and all of the, um, development, all the businesses up in that area, and, um, you know, so it, it is coming from quite a distance away. Um, so yeah, absolutely. Um, there's so many things that, um, can affect that, and I know in the report, I didn't write the report myself, but, um, you know, it, it lists, um, actually, my coworker wrote it, and she did, she actually did a stream walk with other volunteers and walked all of those streams to see where the different problems may lay. So there's a lot of detail in that report that I, you know, obviously, um, I tried to give you a little bit in the, um, in that, uh, letter and, um, you know, overview that I sent, that hopefully everybody got a chance to look at, um, to see all of the, the different sources of pollution. Um, so there's just a large number of things that we, we still, you know, can do a lot of work on, and like I said, in that, um, in our plan, we have all those plans to, uh, COVID kind of, um, you know, waylaid some of the outreach that we would really like to do, and I think it helps to have, um, you know, the, um, the city and the town, um, both approving this, um, plan, and so I want to get some, um, outreach out about that, onto like the town and the city websites, and onto the, um, uh, the public television, and, and do some more, um, letting the town and city folks know, you know, what this project is and how they can help, and, and all of those things. And I really hope we can get that, um, Long Island Sound Future Fund grant, because that also ties very well, uh, into all of this. It's sort of, will have a dual purpose, um, as many things do. So I don't know if I answered your question, but...
And so, thank you, Mara.
All right, thanks again, and, you know, just listening to, um, what you all are talking about, you seem like, um, an amazing group, getting a lot of things done and tackling some really tough issues. So I, I'm very impressed with, um, what the council is doing, and, uh, happy to meet you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think Counselor Bordelain has one more question, Ms. Roby. If you could hold up for one second, please. Counselor Bordelain?
I was just, just going to say, from the plastics ordinance presentation, I believe there was someone who did speak to Counselor Heed's question, um, as I was sitting here thinking, uh, about the microplastics and the shellfish ingesting them. So, uh, the long-term effect, uh, what that's going to have, they're definitely in the shellfish. So, um, but also, I'm, I'm wondering if there could be some formative initiative and some collaboration with, uh, Groton Public Schools, especially with the new, uh, properties, um, being developed and built on new school properties. Um, maybe there's a way that if the school district was interested in reaching out and maybe, um, developing more rain gardens, um, on the new middle school and high school, and maybe they could be, they're on, on property, they could probably be kept by the students, um, easily, because it's, you know, right there. I, I'm not sure if this is something that, um, could happen, but it sounds like a, a great project to, uh, utilize on our, on our public properties.
I would love to involve the students. I think that would be a great way to, um, to get this out more, and so that is something that I think that, um, we, we want to do, and that is in the plan to, you know, engage, I think, uh, young people, and I do apologize, I meant, I wrote on my notes to thank, uh, Ella, or to give a shout out to Ella at Grasso Tech, and I forgot to say that. So they did, they did an amazing job. So, thank you.
All right, very good. Um, it'll be nice having the middle school, if you get something worked out. The middle school is right next door to Grasso now. Um, if we all get back into the building, perhaps there could be something worked out with the middle, middle school kids visiting the BET department and seeing all the water things they do there and the environmental work. Okay.
That...
I'm sorry?
Uh, just...
I just, uh, keep that in mind.
Very good. Counselor Baumgartner, you have another comment?
Yes, and to follow up on that, also a shout out to, um, Diego, uh, a, uh, Eagle Scout. He, he did a project, um, to clean up Birch Plain Creek, um, I believe, last year, and, um, you know, cleanups like that do such a, a great job of cleaning up, uh, pollution that would otherwise, uh, go into a Baker's Cove. So, um, you know, thank you to him and, and all the other young people who, you know, go out there and clean up. Thank you.
Yes, he's a very nice young man. Um, all right, so, seeing no other hands, we will vote on 2020-377 Baker's Cove. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Roby, for coming out this evening, and good luck with your work. It certainly is worthy.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, we are on to 2020-3351 Noank School Property Disposition, and what we have this evening is a series of stakeholders with us, and what they are going to do is be presenting communication, um, based on possibilities for the property. So we will be hearing from several people this evening. Uh, we'll be hearing from the Groton Housing Authority, the Conservation Commission, uh, Mr. Ed Johnson, Mr. Brian Kent, uh, the Noank Fire District. I think that's everybody. So I'm not sure. Let's see who's here. Give me one second, please. Mr. Burt, do you have a certain order that people were going to speak that they are aware of?
Um, no, there's no particular order.
Okay. Um... Is Mr. Capaletti here?
He is.
Okay. Mr. Capaletti, would you like to go first, sir? If you could just identify yourself, please, and tell us, um, your organization that you represent, and then, uh, what your plan for the property would be. And again, to the council and to the public, these are possibilities.
Sure.
Possibilities, these are not, um, anything definitive at this time. The council needs to hear all the options before a decision or debate takes place. So, um, if you could give us a brief, maybe five-minute presentation, and then, um, we will go on to the next presentation. Thank you, Mr. Capaletti. You have the floor.
Well, thank you for allowing us, uh, to speak on, uh, this project, this property. Um, my name's Robert Capaletti. I'm the Executive Director of the Groton Housing Authority. Uh, the Board of Commissioners asked me to, um, speak on behalf of them to present, uh, possible options of partnering with the town to build, um, a, a neighborhood-friendly, small development, uh, on the Noank, former Noank School property. Uh, the development, um, would be a partnership between the Housing Authority and the town so that we could retain, um, some of the, of the neighbors' concerns about, uh, keeping a lot of open space, maintaining community gardens, um, keeping some sort of, or building some sort of perimeter, uh, workout, uh, walking path that had stations that people could use, and public would be able to use. Um, some of our preliminary thoughts, uh, of the, of the, of creating a little village there would be small, um, either 55 and over, uh, units, or, um, uh, or to anybody, any age group, but we wanted to limit the number of bedrooms in the neighborhood, so that there would be no more than, um, two bedrooms per unit. Um, and these would be really like village or cottage-style, uh, uh, single-family units that would be purchased by, um, those who would like to live in the neighborhood. Uh, the land itself would stay, uh, in, the, the land itself would stay in the town's, uh, possession, and the individual units could be sold, uh, and land leased, that land from town. That would do a couple different things. That would keep the public space open to the public. Um, some of that space could be used, um, for flower gardens, meditation areas, uh, exercise, walking, um, that sort of stuff. Also, the, the building that we would propose to build would be quaint and fit into the neighborhood, but they would also take into consideration all the important things that the Groton Housing Authority, uh, does within their new developments, and that means it's energy-efficient. There's zero or low carbon emissions, uh, there's geothermal use, there's solar energy used. Um, I don't know if people know the phrase passive house design, but it's the, uh, most energy-efficient, uh, building envelope that's, uh, out there right now. Um, and that would create a very useful neighborhood. Um, people would be proud to live there and be part of the community, and also would allow the community to come in, uh, and, and still use the space, um, and to limit it to just homeowners. Um, now, we would also like, the reason for partnering with the town is because that would be able, we'd be able to involve the neighborhood. I read through some of the older documents about the history of the Noank, uh, school area after, uh, after the school was, was demolished, and there was a couple different, um, projects that were somewhat unsuccessful, trying to create a community garden and some other open space. Um, looks like the town ends up maintaining or trying to, um, keep up the property. Uh, I propose that when we create this development, that we create a, a HOA, if you will, a housing association, uh, that would pay for the, um, upkeep of, of the, of the, of the property. That way, doesn't put a burden on the town or the parks or parks or on, uh, the maintenance grounds. Also, it gives ownership to those who are purchasing the homes there and involves the neighborhood. That's a really nice way, uh, to use the property, um, and to give it a new life and, and resurrect the old school. I, I understand that it was a very vibrant school with a lot of young, young children in the neighborhood. Um, not saying that this would do that again, but it would bring a new life back to, to the neighborhood and, and the old property. Does anybody have any questions?
So at this point, then, um, we're trying to contain debate until we've heard from all of the options. So if you have questions, very specific questions to gather information, that way you can go back and spend the next couple of weeks reflecting on them. So we're not looking for debate at this time. We're looking for information gathering questions. Does anyone have any questions? Counselor Franco.
How many units do you think you would fit on the property?
Well, we haven't looked at it in that detail, but we figure somewhere between 12 and 15, maybe 18, depending on how we organize the space. Don't forget, these are only about 1400 to 1500 square foot homes, two-story. Very, very basic design, they're living areas on the bottom floor with a master bedroom bath and a half bath. Then upstairs, there would be a larger bedroom for guests and maybe a little office on some of the units. Also some off-street parking and a private parking, you know, garage that belongs to the unit.
And I know it's really hard to say right now, but if you had the two-bedroom quaint little cottages, how much do you think these would be selling for, like just a roundabout figure?
We estimate that they would be around the 325 to 350,000, depending on the size. That, we would probably create a bunch of different models. And the larger units with, with the garage space would be more like the, you know, 350 range. Smaller ones, you know, 325, somewhere around there. Again, it's really hard to predict because we don't know what we're building. But that's, that's our, our goal would be around there because we want people who are downsizing to be able to afford to stay in town and then possible young families to be able to afford to, to come into town, particularly young working families.
And what kind of square footage do you think this might be approximately?
I, I said a little earlier about 1400 to 1600 square feet. So they're small units, small, small, single-family units.
Appreciate that information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council Boardland? Council Boardland, you have the floor?
Yep, I was just slowly clicking my way through. Thanks. Question, have we thought about possibly any one-story units to accommodate people with disabilities or aging or populations where stairs become a problem? When you think of like a quaint village-type setting, making sure that there's the accessibility for all?
Yes, they, they would all be handicap accessible. That's the reason why we have the master bedroom on the first floor with all the bathrooms there. So you have a master bath, a larger closet, master bedroom. And then you have a half bath downstairs or, you know, off the kitchen or family room. And then the reason for the upstairs unit, upstairs bedroom is just in case you have guests. You want somewhere for them to stay, grandchildren, children come visit. If we, if we could put all that on the first floor, which we could, we could do, we would have to shrink the number of units on the property. That's certainly a possibility. And that's the reason for the partnership with the town is so that we can walk, work through the various different styles of units that could be built there and, and what have you.
Yeah, I, I, I think, okay, I just, yeah, I'm not saying they all have to be like that, but it would be nice to have an option for a few, a few of them. And then also looking at the design style, it would be really important to fit into that area, that coastal community. You know, making it look, you know, the cozy, you know, kind of cottagey look over there or, or, you know, putting, having some designs that we could see ahead of time, you know, too, if that went forward.
Is to do, is to do that, to make sure that it fit in and it was the cottage-style, small village that we're creating there.
Correct. And my last question, because since we paid like 540-something thousand dollars to demolish the school and flatten everything out, I mean, this land is ready to be developed based on what your model that you present, you're talking about, basically.
Are you saying how long would it take to develop it?
No, I'm saying the land is pretty much flattened and demolished and ready for development based on what we paid to do with the property originally. So it'd be an easy fit for something like this.
Oh, yes, yes, I agree.
Council Heath?
Yes, I have two questions. The first one is, could you go into a little bit more detail on, on what the community access to the property would be? Like, what would be the open space component to it? And the second part is, maybe you could just clarify a little bit for me, what's the benefit to the town on, from this proposal?
So let's talk about the better in the town first. So two things would, would be right off the bat is that the town gets to retain the ownership of the land and a long-term land piece. And then they can also, with that, they would make restrictions for the property, how it was maintained, how, how the open space would be used, that sort of, sort of stuff. The public spaces, basically a perimeter, walking path or jogging path with a variety of workout stations. And I, we had noticed that someone in the public had recommended that, and I thought that's a really great idea. That, that's on the perimeter of the property. Then within the interior of the property, there'd be a variety of flower gardens, rain gardens, a community garden space where you can grow vegetables and that sort of stuff. And we would, we would spread them around the property so that equal to the perimeter jogging and exercise trail, these would be different spaces for different purposes. You know, growing vegetables, looking at flowers, meditation, meeting space, all, all outdoor space, all open to the public and the neighborhood. My guess is that the neighbors that are there now use that space for a variety of dog walking and just relaxing and walking in the space. We'd like to be able to keep that so that the neighbors weren't being restricted 100% on the property. Now, obviously, the, these are going to be homeownership units, so they'd have a small little private yard. But we would make it very small so that it'd be enough, you know, for, you know, maybe people to walk out in, in the backyard and sit and enjoy the, the open space. But keep in mind, they have the larger open space to exercise and walk and do other things. So just a little bit of personal space would be okay, but not, not too much, not to take away from the rest of the property. I hope that answered your question.
Thank you. Councilors of Perry, please.
What is the usual, or the average number of occupants per home that you, you have?
We would guess, and, and again, this is all just conceptual, but we expect that there would be one to two people on most of the units. And then the large square foot, just 1600 square foot, we designed those, at least in theory, for a young family with one or two children could, sharing a bedroom could, could occupy it. But we would mix it up so there wouldn't be that many children, you know, families with children moving in because we do want to have a nice mixture of 55 and over and, and, and some families. So maybe four or five family units and the rest would be 55 and over.
So am I correct that the development of this into housing under your proposal would benefit approximately 36 people? Am I correct?
I, I didn't do the math exactly, but that's, sounds about right. Again, this is only conceptual. We'd have to work with a town planner and really, you know, get into it. See what would fit there, make sure that we can fit all the open space as well. So that, that's about right, but it could be less if we build less units.
And how much of the six acres would those 12 to 14 units occupy?
We haven't done a conceptual plan of that yet. So my guess is, is that they would only be on small lots, like, like what you see in, in the city side, you know, like 50 by 100 lot-sized space or maybe even smaller, depending on how the town helps us design it. But so we would want to retain as much of the open space as possible, but still giving people who purchase a little bit of private space. So the goal would be, is to maximize the open space as much as possible.
Thank you.
Council Melendez?
I was actually just ask if he had any idea how many acres would remain open space, but it seemed like he doesn't know just yet.
That's correct. But we, we, the goal again would be to maximize the open space as much as possible where we're still building units that have a little bit of private space.
And it looks like I have the final question for you. So if you could just explain to the public the tax structure on this. If the town retains title to the land, that the land cannot be taxed. So then, when the individuals buy these properties, is the town taxing the dwellings but not the land?
Yes, Mayor, that, that's correct. So the units would be taxed like any other dwelling unit. So the improvements on the land would be what's being taxed. That would maximize the benefit for the town. And also by creating a HOA or, or a homeownership association, they would be charged a fee to maintain the spaces, the open space. And we guess it'd probably be about 1200, $100 a year, a small amount to maintain the walking trails, the gardens, snow removal, that sort of stuff.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And that looks like all the questions. So thank you for presenting this evening, Mr. Capaletti. And if you could leave your contact information, if you could email it to the manager, please. That way, if councillors have questions over the next week or so, they could contact you via email, please.
I have all his contact information.
Thank you very much. All right, next we have, Larry Dunn is on the list. Mr. Dunn, are you with us this evening?
One second here. Okay, he's authorized to speak.
Thank you. Just tell us who you're with, please.
Yes.
Thank you.
You can hear me?
Yes, sir, go right ahead.
I'll, I'll be brief. I think the, the commission's intent is to provide, you know, objective and consistent input to the town council to aid in your decision process, which is really the intent today.
And that would be the Conservation Commission, correct, Mr. Dunn?
Conservation Commission, Larry Dunn is the chairman of that commission, excuse me. As Counselor Heady, you know, mentioned earlier, we did just post a, the first draft of the conservation plan for review in the website. And a part of that does address availability and access to open space in local parks to all the demographic areas within Town of Grotton. So that's an emerging trend going on there in the conservation community. And that section is, is called the social justice section of the plan. But that's kind of a side point I thought I would mention. From background point of view, as part of the development of the plan, we have established a criteria to quantify each of the potential open space parcels for acquisition. And the course of that is, is the alternate use of the school property fits into that definition. The standards, guidelines and evaluation methodology, you know, what's created is there to review, but we're really looking for intelligent and sustainable conservation decisions, notwithstanding the importance of the economic impact for the town. So the, the way we've looked at it is 40% of the evaluation is based upon the evaluation of economics to the town and 60% of the social value to the town. And based upon that, over the last year and a half, we have supported commercial developments, actually to some extent, although I don't have the details on Mr. Capaletti's proposal. But we have supported a commercial development on the Sealy School property, the Grotton Heights School, and then we've got Education Center property. So we think we're providing a balanced input. Now, the Noang School specifically, when we did go through the analysis, we wound up saying, or our position is that we do support retaining the properties as a community park, you know, not supporting residential development per se. The economics of it, remember that's the 40%, is that the net-net tax benefit to the town is about 23,000 a year. I'm sorry, now 37,000 per year. The last input I gave to the town council has been improved with a sale price of the land being up to 717,000. And the assumptions on the sale of the, of the value of the house has been upped as well. So that puts a value to the town of about 37,000 per year or so. I did a real quick model input on the proposal that was just made, and that's about the same area, 38 to 40,000 per year benefit to the town. But I didn't include anything for the benefits of the residual open space. I don't have the details of that. I'd be happy to take a look at that. When you look at retaining the, the property as open space, there's also an economic value to the town, and that is viewed as about 31,000 a year. So the delta there, you're talking about $6,000 a year. And it does come in different ways, and I won't get into that, it just takes too much time at this point. But there are a lot of positive benefits that accrues to the town, just in a different way. Now, the remaining 60% are positive social factors, which is difficult to translate into dollars, with the value of recreation, health, wellbeing, et cetera. We did get in about 62 letters. I did eliminate some what I thought dupes to Counselor Heady's comment of 76. I counted 62. But when I looked at all that, there was one, I guess, paragraph I wanted to quickly enter into the record from Becky Carlson Gil Karowski that actually said it better than I could. And I'll, and I'll quote it real quick. "Our view from our home office is a daily front row seat to actually witness the number of constituents who frequent the area with their children, pets and activities. Especially in times of the most recent pandemic, the park has flourished with homebound families who have visited for some much-needed relief while in quarantine. In this way, this space has been more than a refuge, was undoubtedly under some of the more traditional activities of family togetherness. We have seen children flying kites, taking golf putt lessons, grandparents pickers gardening, walking, jogging the perimeter, wiffle ball games and countless people engaging in activities with their pets." Now, that's, that was one input. I do want to say that out of the 62 inputs to the council, 79% were in favor of retaining the area's open space. I'd also like to remind you of a 2011 survey that was completed on this topic before the building was torn down. I kind of went to the source data and extracted the option of residential housing versus open space. And that was a little less. It was 70% to retain for recreational open space, 30% to develop residential housing. And that was 129 people in that survey. Now, there were seven survey, a survey or, or feedbacks that opposed keeping the school properties open space into two real areas. One was to increase the tax base to Grotton. And two was that, well, the Noang Fire District already has enough open space. On the former, yeah, there's, there's, based upon our, look, there's an additional 6,000 per year of benefit to the, the town. And that is, makes a lot of assumptions on, you know, getting the developer, getting it built, getting it sold, et cetera. I will say that in the current price range, you know, that, that the homes in the Noang area typically take more than a year to sell. That's a different discussion entirely. On the second point, the Noang Fire District has, has 11.1% of its area designated as open space. If you add the Noang School property into it, it puts it 11.7. That's about, about half what the overall Town of Grotton has. So it's not overly represented. But I think the net is that town council needs to weigh the real and immediate benefit of a Noang school as a park versus a future possibility of an additional $6,000 a year benefit with residential development. I would like to, to close in saying that the Conservation Commission strongly supports this property as park and open space. And if in fact the council votes to retain the property as a community park, the Conservation Commission would, is offering to provide support to develop a stewardship plan for this property to avoid some of the issues in the past. And that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Do any of the councillors have information gathering questions at this point? Again, we're not debating right now. Anyone have questions for Mr. Dunn? I think we've all had a chance to take a look at the information. I'm not seeing, oh, Council Oberg, go ahead.
If I could, I would ask them to update their, their information on the time for sale of property in, in Grotton. They, they had it as an extended period of time, and it's not anymore.
Mr. Dunn, do you need Council Oberg to? Mr. Dunn, do you need councillor Obray to provide that for you, or do you?
I know, I just went online two days ago and I looked at the dates, et cetera. And so 50% of the properties take over, have been on the market more than a year. So I, I'm not sure how to respond to that, other than what I, what I did a week ago.
Could I ask what you went to to get that information?
Zillow listings?
Well, we, we have less than 50 listings on in Groton right now. And very few of them have been on for any length of time. But there are some certainly, but most right now are turning over in about a week to two weeks.
Right. In the, in the Noank Fire District, there are 14 homes on the market. And about, and that's the ones I focused on. There's actually a few more. I focused on the ones that were above the $500,000 range. There's a few more that are below that. And of those 14, about half of those had been on the market over a year. So I did not look at the entire Town of Groton.
That's, just thought I'd mention it.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, I see no other hands. So thank you, Mr. Dunn, and we all have your report. So we appreciate your coming out this evening and sharing that information with us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Ed Johnson. Are you moving it over? Good evening, Mr. Johnson. If you could just state your name and tell us what your intent is.
My name is Edward Johnson. I live at 87 Main Street in Groton. And I apologize for my voice. I'll do the best I can with this. I sent out a revised proposal to the council, so you folks should have that. For the benefit of the people watching on television, I'll give you a quick summary. Basically, I am a resident that's in favor of the Noank property being used as open space. The problem with doing it, depending on how you go about it, is the cost of ongoing maintenance in some cases. So my objective was to try and keep taxes low from that point of view. At the same time, we've got a situation where because of the construction of the new middle school on the Merit property, we've taken down about 12 acres of trees. And that's 12 acres of devices, if you will, that produce oxygen for us. So essentially, what, what I'm proposing, and I've discussed this with some, is using the approximate six acres of Noank School as an arboretum, a miniature forest, if you will. There's some variety that can be applied to this to meet some individual needs. Fruit trees could be there, some shrubs, some flowers. There's some access trails that could snake through the area that would be appropriate for families to walk through with their small children. There could be a few picnic tables. And there could be an informal, multipurpose, small playing field, not a regulation field, that would be easy to just simply mow grass over. So maintenance of the property, once the trees are growing, would be minimal. And you have an existing parking lot and access which can remain. And basically, the property would exist for the benefit of all Groton citizens. The idea is that the Town of Groton would retain this property for open space in perpetuity, meaning, I hope, forever. That's, that's one of my hopes. A line item that we could add with the Groton Parks Foundation could be designated to receive monetary or real donations for trees to get the whole project started. Once it's going, it should be okay. And as far as management of the project, it would be a committee of town residents. I suggested one from each voting district to oversee this arboretum park property, be appointed annually by the town council to report to the town director of parks and recreation, and to provide quarterly reports to the council and the director. A primary objective would be the preservation of the land as an environmental resource for future generations. And I'll stop there if there are any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Does anyone have any informational questions, any information you need to gather from Mr. Johnson? Councillor Heath.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Regarding having a member of each of the voting districts appointed, would Mr. Johnson consider the Conservation Commission as an alternative?
Yes, I would, under certain conditions, and we could, we could work that out later.
All right, thank you.
Councillor Franco?
Mr. Johnson, I, I don't know if I, I maybe misheard, but I wasn't sure what organization you're representing.
I'm representing myself as a citizen of Groton.
Thank you.
All right, I see no other questions. And again, if you have questions that you want to ask about this particular idea, the manager has Mr. Johnson's contact information. So thank you, Mr. Johnson, for speaking with us this evening.
Thank you.
And we have next Brian Kent, Mr. Burt, I think he is an attendee.
I promoted him to panelist. My understanding is he?
Good evening, Mr. Kent. Mr. Kent?
Okay.
Hello, if you could just identify yourself.
Yes. I'm Brian Kent, principal at the Lansky Architecture Fund, and we're located in this city.
You have the floor, sir.
I'd like to request a screen share from the, from the Zoom meeting. I was under the impression I could share my screen.
One moment, I'm going to make a co-host. Give me one moment, please.
Okay.
Okay, you should be sat down. That should be authorized.
Okay. I was going to say you could begin your presentation while that's happening, but it looks like you're set.
Okay. Let's see. I'd like to start by giving you some, a little bit of background. And I was contacted by the Noank Community Garden Task Force. Here we go. The Community Garden Task Force about a year ago, asking if I would assist them with preparation of a landscape plan for the, for the, for the site. We agreed to do that pro bono, and we presented a plan that, if you recall, because it came before the, the council included, some of the, some of the amenities that you see here on this plan. At that time, there was a pavilion and a restroom in addition to what you see here. And we received, or they received some feedback.
Excuse me, Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Your screen share is not working?
Okay. How about? Let's try this.
If not councillor Baumgartner, do you have it handy that you could share from your screen?
How about this? No? Yes?
No.
Do you see the, on the bottom of your Zoom screen, do you see the share screen button in the middle of the bottom of the screen?
Yes, yes, yes.
You hit that and then go to the file.
Okay. How about that?
Thank you very much.
Ah, yes, okay, thank you. So you can see this plan now? Is that correct? Okay.
Yes.
I can see it, thank you.
All right, thank you. So, so this is, this is a modified plan from, that you saw last year. It's been updated. I was recently contacted by, by members of the Noank community, former members of the task force, asking if I would consider changes to the plan reflecting sentiment that favors the ideas that you just heard with an arboretum component to the park. And what we did was a very quick modification to that plan. And it basically replaced what had been an open space area here that contained a pavilion that was intended as an outdoor classroom to complement the community garden, and also a restroom, which would allow, you know, users of the, of the park to have that amenity. Those were, the comments from the commission a year ago, or the council a year ago, was that those represented a large expense, and there was concern about that. And so the current thinking is take out items that are the most expensive items, and that would require the most maintenance, and replace them with more trees and more natural area. So what you see here is that plan quickly modified to include more trees, more natural areas, AKA arboretum. Now, I'd like to point out that this is a six acre property. As you know, it's success, accessed by our court up here on the upper left, Smith Lane in the bottom, and it essentially sits at the top of the hill. And the hill slopes off all the way down to Elm Street on the east side. And if you stand out there, you wouldn't realize that the back of the garden is not the boundary. The property slopes down very steeply from the edge of the community garden to the property lot. And this area in here is about an acre, and it's about an 18% slope. So it's basically undevelopable for construction, as the Groton misuse regulations typically stipulate for slopes of that, that gradient. And so it's really, it's only realistic use as something natural to help retain the slope and prevent erosion. You know, there are residents right against that property line. So the interest here is just to keep it in a natural state, selectively plant and clean it up to give it an arboretum function. There could be some walking trails in here, but of course, they would be steep to get down along the slope. So the area of the community garden is actually large enough to contain a community garden and an orchard. What's there now is very spread out. It contains the best soil on the site, because this is outside of the envelope of the building. The building was actually where we're showing this youth lacrosse soccer orchard playground area. And in this case, there's been some talk about a recreational area. This is a regulation youth lacrosse and soccer field, so smaller than, say, a high school or college field. And in the original formulation of this plan, we communicated with the Groton Parks and Recreation Department, and we, and we understand that these kinds of fields are in high demand, and that they're needed for practices and that sort of thing. So that's why that's included there, and that's how much space would be required. We also included a rain garden to accept the runoff from the area playground, a healing garden, which has been reconceived now to include the victims of the, of the pandemic. So another thing to consider. So basically, this is a modified plan updated for today's discussion. And that's the extent of my presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kent. Let's see, I need to scroll through because I can't see the whole panel. I don't see any hands. I have a question. Is it in your plan as to the funding for the various provisions, for example, the field in the healing garden and the purchase of the trees? Do you have a plan for those items, please?
No, I personally do not. And I'd like to point out and underscore that this plan was done really over a year ago with only some recent input. And it was done to present a vision of how this, this property could be used as a community park. And that it included elements that would be attractive and useful for the Groton community at large. It really deserves a more thorough and open planning process that would, I think, ideally workshop with stakeholders from around the town. And at that point, I think it's obvious that the plan would change. And then a cost and a development program could be put together that would be realistic and that would be achievable. So this is really just a vision plan, and we don't put costs on vision plans when we're just trying to establish, you know, the, the, the long range conceptual potential of a piece of property there. So we could certainly get to that point, but it deserves a more open planning process, in my opinion, before you.
Thank you. I just didn't know if you had an idea, as Mr. Johnson had presented. And we see councillor Baumgartner. You have the floor, sir. I've got to look for everybody else, too. So you can, you can speak now, councillor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Brian, for your very thorough presentation. You know, and I think in many ways, this plan, it synthesizes the interests of several members of the council. As you know, there are several councillors who are calling for the investment in our open spaces as well as sports facilities. Right now, we have a task force that is looking to identify locations in our town that could accommodate more sports fields. And I, I think this plan uniquely captures, again, all of those competing interests and demonstrates that in any ways, all of these competing interests are in a complement on one another, creating a, a space that can be enjoyed by, I think, nearly everyone in our community, not just those in Noank. And so my question to you, Brian, is, you know, as you know, this, this plan is not an end all be all, and it's important to engage other stakeholders in our community on what, you know, a vision for the Noank School property may look like. But I know in our discussions, you know, I mentioned to you that in Eastlime, they're building an ADA accessible playground and multi-use playing field in, in, for, you know, folks who are on the spectrum, or, you know, have physical, you know, physical, as well as physical disabilities. And so my question to you is, is that something that could potentially, you know, we talk about investment, who's going to pay for what? Is, you know, say if we were to go in the direction of having a sports field, is that perhaps a, a direction the town can go in that could also, you know, such a plan benefiting from, from private donations?
That certainly could be considered. I would say that there are a variety of uses that this property could, could provide that would satisfy the need for a, a community park. And it would be just added to the list of potential uses. And the way this is done, you know, in a, in a systematic and responsible way is each potential use is evaluated for its benefit, for its cost, for its life cycle over time to the town cost, and for its impact on the land. And, and really, the most effective way to plan a park is to go through that process, to look at each proposal that community stakeholders bring forward, and put real, you know, analysis on it so that when you select the actual improvements and changes to the property, you know upfront what you're getting into in terms of long-term costs and upfront investment and benefit to the overall community, both, you know, economically and socially and environmentally. So there is a way to do this very systematically that would determine whether that kind of a facility, that, that kind of you know, specialized field and playground work best here, or whether they might work best somewhere else in town. So, you know, we could certainly, we would be certainly happy to go through that process. And we would be also, I think, willing to continue our participation. We are a Groton business, and we look for ways that we can contribute. And I think helping with the planning of this project would be one of those ways that we consider contributing.
Thank you, Brian. And lastly, given the removal of several healthy and mature trees at the Merit, Merit property to make way for the new Groton Middle School, as, as Ed Johnson mentioned, what percentage of, say, if we were to go the direction of having, you know, a partial arboretum or an arboretum, and, you know, which case, you know, both I'd be supportive of. You know, say we were to use those, you know, that property to, you know, to install native, native trees to sequester carbon, what percentage of this plan reflects the, kind of the arboretum vision? What percentage of the total site?
It's about 50%. I think. It's about 50% I think. And, you know, there is an upper northwest corner, the Christmas tree grove, which is intended as a, as a, as a replaceable resource. But it could be also planted with the native trees that you're referring to once the Christmas trees are harvested. So, you know, I'm, I'm estimating 50 to 60% of the site could support a healthy tree community and the other percent could support, you know, the, the active uses and the, and the community garden and the environmental services that Rain Garden and other sorts of changes to that, to that, to that landscape would support.
And I did promise the mayor, it would be my last question, so I apologize for that one more. It's with respect to stewardship, you know, we, you and I have had discussions in the past about kind of what, what a good model for, for stewardship would be for the property is, you know, in, in New London, several years ago, there was a referendum as to whether or not the, the city would sell Riverside Park to the Coast Guard Academy and the voters rejected that and decided they wanted to keep, you know, keep that property in perpetuity for, for the, you know, next generation of New Londoners to enjoy. But a piece, a piece of that steward, you know, the stewardship is done by a group called the Riverside Park Conservancy that works kind of hand in hand with the Department of Parks and Recreation there. So is that kind of a, perhaps if, you know, I know Mr. Johnson mentioned, you know, a committee that would sort of maintain oversight of that property, but could the Riverside Park model work for, you know, something like the, the Noank School property garden slash park?
It certainly could. And I'm very familiar with Riverside Park because I designed the master plan for the park that followed the Coast Guard Academy referendum when the city voted to retain ownership. So certainly there is a model based on that kind of a, a community group, a conservancy that would certainly complement the, the town's involvement. It also, of course, requires a devoted cadre of volunteers who would donate their time. It's not just, you know, a group that meets monthly. It's feet on the ground and it's flippers and shovels. And New London has been very effective at marshaling those kinds of individuals to, to devote themselves to Riverside Park. So there's no reason why you wouldn't see that here. The people that I have met and have worked with on this particular project seem very devoted and very, very committed to taking care of this property. And with that kind of an organization, I think that could be, that could be very effective.
Thank you for that, Brian, and thank you for updating this, this plan.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Mr. Kent, we have one more question from Council Bordelain, if you don't mind, please.
Okay.
Thank you. Council Bordelain, you have the floor?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the detailed plan here. Were there any accommodations or thoughts into looking at other sized fields that could fit there when, when configuring this map at all?
The next size up is quite large and it would occupy far more of the property. And it would involve a much more intensive use because you would need to have a more frequent programming to justify something that large. So it was a decision made after some communication with Parks and Rec that a youth field would be the most realistic and practical to maintain, to, 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 to have in terms of its scale and the number of kids and the, you know, the amount of activity there. This seemed to be a realistic balance.
Okay. And so do you have any information on the other sized fields that were considered?
Really, they weren't considered. I mean, we overlaid a, a, say a high school regulation field and it's the rectangular fields that are in short supply, as you know, in Groton. And a, a, so a, a high school regulation field is twice the size of this, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank you for your comments.
You're welcome.
Council Franco.
Hi, thank you. Can you, can you tell me how much current parking there is off of Smith Lane?
You know, that parking lot is actually, I think, larger than most people realize. It's got, I think, about 12 to 15 spaces on each side. So it's, it's between 24 and 30 regulation parking spaces because it was the school's principal parking lot. And the other paved areas for the school were handicap access parking spaces. So this really served as the parking lot for all the employees of the school.
Okay. And then up on Williams Street, I've been up there and it seems like it's quite a wide road. And my concern is that people keep telling me there's not enough parking up there. So you're saying there's between 24 and 30 on Smith, off of Smith Lane, but then on Williams Street where on your diagram, there were trees, would it be possible to put, instead of parallel parking up there, actually have it so that cars can pull straight in and maybe have a gravel, maybe a gravel driveway there or parking area? And if so, do you know how many more parking spots you might get in that area?
Well, the reason that Williams is wide there is because that was where the buses loaded and unloaded. So it was widened at some point, you know, to provide for the buses to be parallel and not impede the two-way traffic on the street. But in order to have pulling parking, you would have to widen it even more. And then you'd have cars backing out into the travel lanes, which is not recommended. And to create a second off-street parking area, so learn to what you have down on the Smith Lane side, you would basically take up perhaps what is now the, the Christmas tree grove. And you would have to do significant grading there and you're also directly adjacent to a residence. So you would, you would be impacting the neighbor and you would have to, of course, screen that. So there are a number of, of elements that, that would just have to be considered. And the question is, is, is that many parking spaces necessary for a six acre park? I don't have an answer to that now, but it's certainly something to look into.
Right. Yeah, that was just my question is if we had pulling parking, do you know how many would fit there?
If you were to, if you were to occupy the Christmas tree grove, you could probably do the parking that you now have off of Smith Lane. So you could probably double the parking. But I can't imagine that you would need 50 to 60 parking spaces for this facility, for this park.
Right. I'm, I've been directed, I really shouldn't debate today, I was just trying to get direct answers to some questions.
Sure, absolutely. No, but that, that I think is realistic.
I have some other things in my mind as well. So I, that's what I was wondering. Because let me, if there are people, teams playing on the field and then you have people on the park, you may not have enough parking.
Well, so, so we did consider that when we selected the youth lacrosse field size. In most or many cases, players are dropped off. And in, in a case where there's a field with short parking, it's typically carpooling and dropping off or, or they're coming in vans or buses. Because this is an issue with many fields and many parks, there's, 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 there's only so much pavement that you want to dedicate to automobiles in a, in a, in a green space. So that's the, that's the trade-off and that's the challenge when you're designing athletic fields.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kent. And I think, Mr. Bert, you have Mr. Kent's contact information also if the councillors have other questions over the next week or so. Thank you, Mr. Kent, for coming out. The next group on the agenda is, I believe it's Noank Fire District, Michael Noel, Catherine Rathbun and Frank Sosha, I believe they're here.
One second, please.
Certainly.
We have them.
Thank you. So, Mr. Sosha, are you going to take the lead on this or, or I'll let you decide who's going to?
Okay. I will take the lead if, if you don't mind, I'd like to just take a moment to speak to Council Franco. A lot of people don't know this, but I am currently in the middle of dealing with a stage four cancer. Fortunately, things are going well and what I want to just pass on to you is that you are going to learn that you are going to have a tremendous amount of support from your family and friends. It's been very humbling for me. Council Bordelain was absolutely right when she said that the cancer diagnosis is tougher on the people around the patient than it is on the patient. And that's been my experience. And what I would, the most best advice I can give you is to when people come up and offer to help, say yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Having said that, again, Frank Sosha, Chairman of the Fire District, Mr. Bert approached us a while back about if the Fire District would have an interest in this property. And we agreed that we would have an interest. We don't have a specific proposal at this point, but we'd reiterate our consensus is that the property should be maintained as a park of some sort. I agree with Mr. Dunn in that the residential development of the property would be at best neutral to a small gain for the town, taking a piece of property that would be available for perhaps dozens or hundreds of people on a regular basis to, to a point where it would be available to 10, 15 people. You know, keeping it as a, as a park, in my view, is an investment in the community, much like the investment that was made on Quonic Road, Quonic Plains Park years ago. This was one of the best investments, in my opinion, that the town has ever made as far as benefiting large numbers of people of all ages. I think you'd be doing the same thing, maintaining this property as a park. Noank has a history of maintaining a park that was leased to Noank by the town next to the firehouse. This was leased back in 1953, I believe. At the time, the town government was a board of selectmen. They leased it with three stipulations, that the Fire District would improve the property into a park, that the Fire District would be responsible for all liability attaining to the park, and that the firehouse would be used as a voting hall. The voting hall has since been moved, but the Fire District has continued to maintain a property over the years. In my tenure as Chairman of the Fire District, we've had to upgrade the park twice. We've invested well over $300,000 over time to maintain that park and it's an asset to our community. It's used by people from all over the town. Actually, there are people come from out of town that use the park. It's very popular with grandparents and grandkids. It's truly an asset. And if the, if the town would want to enter an agreement with the Fire District, we'd love to get into a long-term lease, similar to what we've had with the park. We have a park commission in place now that, that could be tasked with managing the oversight of the property, working with the, the people in the community, especially those that have been active on Prospect Hill and Hillside and Williams Street in taking care of the property, who continue to do so, by the way, even though there's no agreement with anybody with the town, there's still people that go over there and mow and the flowers and such. So there's active interest in that property being a, a park. If some kind of agreement could be made, like I say, we could have our park commission get involved with it. Of course, the wild card, as always, is I would have to go back with any agreement to our voters and get an agreement, get them to vote to approve any kind of agreement that we may eventually negotiate. Just to close it up, I would say that we strongly support, our executive committee strongly supports keeping the property as a park for the benefit of as many as possible. Thank you.
I just have a question regarding what, what length of lease would you be looking at, sir?
Well, we would love to get a hundred-year lease like we did the first time with the park next to the firehouse. I don't know if that's feasible or not, but that's what, that was the lease that was negotiated the last time. I would, I would say something that would give us workable arrangements would be at least a minimum of 20 years, ideally perhaps 50, you know, which would allow the Fire District over time to, to truly invest into the property and, and make it into something that the town and the Fire District would be proud of.
And as a quick follow-up, you said that this would be open to the entire town for use.
Absolutely.
The current park is as well, correct?
Current park is much of the open space in town in, in the Noank Fire District. Esca Point, the Town Dock, there are actually several other smaller pieces that are town-owned off of Pearl Street. There's actually a small spot in Crosswinds that I think, about the only thing the town does with it right now is mow. And then in Tanglewood, there's a fairly large piece of property with a basketball court and a hill that leads down to Palmer's Cove that gets a lot of use in the winter when we have snow. It's very popular with people taking their kids to go sledding and such. So, you know, we do have a lot of open space, not to mention the, the property off of BB Cove. I can't think of the name of it right now, but the, where Parks and Recs is right now. So, but the, Mr. Dunn mentioned something in his report that should have, the properties on Prospect Hill had gone before the planning commission, the property encompassed by Prospect Hill, Brook Street, Elm Street. School property would constitute the size of the land that the planning commission would ask to be given to the town as open space. I thought that was a good point. This would give a, this property would, would give that community open space, a park, which it had when the school was there. It was kind of after hours, but when the school was there, that was actually a park-like setting for the, the people that lived in that area. And I'd love to see that continue.
Thank you, sir. Council Bordelain.
My question was pertaining to what, would you be submitting a plan as to how you would lay out this park and utilize it if it was leased? Would we have that before making our decision or how would that work?
I would, I would probably, if our taxpayers approved it and we got, we entered into the agreement, I would immediately contact Mr. Kent and the people that worked with him because it looks like he has a pretty good handle on, on a plan for that. I would absolutely, this would be something that our park commission would work on in conjunction with the people that are, have been involved in the property previous and have some experience of what's already there. We don't have a plan per se right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other councillors have a question for Fire District? Council Heed.
Thank you. This, actually, my, my plan, my questions would be for all of them, if that's possible. A few of the neighbors have expressed interest over time of buying a slice here or there, like a border or to straighten out their property line or something like that. Would any of you have an objection to moving forward on any of those? I think two were already done. We have one more request, if I'm aware of. The, the second thing is more so, I guess, for the Groton Housing Authority, have, has, have they approached the Noank zoning board or the Fire District with their ideas or is that just a proposal at this point? And that's all, thank you.
Okay. So do, why don't we start with your last question? So you're wondering if Groton Housing Authority has talked to the Fire District yet, correct?
Yeah. As, as far as I know, no one has approached our zoning enforcement officer with any kind of questions along those lines. I know he was approached by the town attorney about what the possible uses of the property were, but I don't know anything about a housing authority, having spoken to him. He hasn't mentioned anything. having spoken to him. He hasn't mentioned anything, and the Fire District Executive Committee has not been approached either.
Mr. Capitetti, did you wish to speak?
No, we, we have not looked that deep into it. We have not approached the Fire District or any zoning yet. The goal was to partner with the town to come up with a plan first and then go, go to the zoning commission.
Thank you. Councilor Heed, your second question was about people that have expressed adjacent, abutting property owners wanting to purchase small chunks. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And if any of them, if any of the people who presented, if that particular scenario would be problematic to your overall plan? Whoever wants to jump in, you're welcome to speak. Mr. Noel, you have your hand up? Mr. Dunn? I see two hands. There we go.
There we go. Is Mr. Noel up first? Do you recognize first?
You can go ahead, sir.
All right. Well, I think there's two questions here. One is, where, where is the property? You know, somewhere's on that, that high slope, that 14, 18-degree slope in adjacent, that certainly, I wouldn't have any objection to that, assuming that included in that sale back to the resident that there'd be a conservation easement, so nothing could be built and it would be retained as, in effect, you know, the abhorridum or the trees that would remain there. So I'm less concerned about that versus, you know, who owns it versus keeping it there for the appropriate environmental benefit.
Are there any other responses from the group for Councilor Heed's question?
Yeah, this is Michael Noel speaking. I'm in the Executive Committee of the Noink Fire District. I would be opposed to selling off any more additional little pieces of the property. I'd like to, I think keeping it as a park is, should be the town's priority for everybody to enjoy. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Johnson, did you wish to speak?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. There were two sales of borderline property previously, which I think the council is already familiar with. And the land in that case, in both cases, was basically unusable as far as the current use of the park at that time. I agree that no further sale of property would be appropriate. And I'm speaking as a citizen of that area. I think it causes more problems if you do that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not sure what other groups. Is Mr. Kent still here? Did he wish to express an opinion on this?
Let's see. I no longer see his name on the list unless I'm missing it.
He's on, he's a panelist. Did you wish to?
I, I, I would, I would agree with Mr. Johnson. I, I think that the, the property's best use or one potential use is as a park, and I, I think if it were to be preserved and developed into a park that it would benefit the adjacent landowners by being an open space. So I don't see any reason to sell any of the additional land there, remaining land there. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I think that's everyone who presented. Councilor Heed, does that answer your questions?
Oh, yes, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any other hands. Give everybody a minute. Council Franco.
Does that conclude all of our presenters?
Yes, it does. I, I believe so. Mr. Bird, do you have anyone else?
I do not have anyone else.
Okay.
All right, because I, I would like to speak about the property itself, of something that hasn't been brought up.
Is, is this disseminating information to the rest of the council, please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I, I had mentioned in previous communications that there are, there is a sports field task force that's looking to see what is, the needs are of our community. And it has been update, we're working on an update at this moment. And a, a question that I had brought forward was, is this property conducive to possibly using for sports fields, which are in, we have a shortage in our, our community? As I'm aware, the high school does not have a softball field, a lacrosse field, a soccer field, nor lacrosse and field hockey. So this being open up to the school was an idea of also potentially being utilized for high school sports. So during the day, it would be mostly quiet and you would have some sports fields being utilized by the high school. And it would meet a need of our community as well. And if you had two sports fields on there, you could also have community open space as well in the area. But it would fit two needs, and this is why I was asking about parking, because if you did potentially have two fields on there, you may need more parking area, one on the top and, you know, to the, I don't know, flap of the diagram into William Street, I'm sorry, and Smith Street, which may potentially fit both needs. Although the task force has not come to any type of agreement as to whether this land could or could not be used for, you know, you know, the, the sports fields, as we haven't gotten that far. We've, we've only had a couple of meetings and we're working on this type of topic. Though also, there is, there are grants from the state of Connecticut that can be used for sports fields, and I have seen very large sums of money that have gone to other towns for sports fields in their communities, which could help, though I do not, it is unknown at this time what could happen with the state of Connecticut and their grants this year. As I believe they're waiting for federal funding and seeing how that works. So I would also like to throw in as a submittal that sports fields be also a potential in the running for all the other options that are down here and for our high school, if they, even if the high school sees that it might be something they're interested in, or even Parks and Rec. Because it's something our community also needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Borderline, you have your hand up. We are not debating tonight, but if you have other information you wish to disseminate to the council, please take the floor.
Thank you. I also just wanted to give light to what Councilor Franco stated on the sports committee. I'm also part of that, and I think it is important that we look at fields as another factor and in looking at the space, looking at the whole needs of the town. And like, really not knowing, I'm no expert on every sport, so I'm not sure how big a field hockey field needs to be per se. So, but it could be a mixed use of open space and facilitate the, the need, which enhances our economic development in this town by enhancing our high school, which is a driver for tax revenue, bringing folks in when we have the accessibility to fields. So I, like I said, I'm, I'm really curious to see how the field, sports fields could be used in that capacity.
Yes. Mr. Noel has his hand up?
I wasn't done, but.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were. We were just.
I was just pausing. I apologize. I.
That's okay.
I have, still, I have chemo brain and I get foggy at times still, so I, I talk a little bit slow and it's not intentional. I apologize. I, I was just saying that I just think that we, when we look at all properties across the town, we look at the needs. I mean, we have the Sealy School property. We look at, you know, as a tax revenue, the location. We need to look at this property just as equally as how is it going to benefit the town, not necessarily on a numeric, but, but on a, on a needs basis. So I just want to make sure that we really, truly looked at it from all of Grotton and what the town needs to make sure that every aspect of town's needs are met. When you look at the demographics across town, you see less open space in urban areas and quick to turn those properties over and not equate for use of fields or open space and they're developed. And I just want to consider that this property has been already developed. It's flattened. And in putting a sports field on there of some sort is like bringing back the original intention of the property for the schools to be used by the children in that capacity. Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to remind the councilors, we're not debating this evening. We were just here to receive information and ask questions of the people who presented. Mr. Noel, you had your hand up to speak, sir. Did you wish to have the floor?
Yes, please. Yeah, I just had one question for all of the councilors, basically, just to see who has visited the park, the park in the last couple of months? Have most of you or any of you? I know, I know, I know the mayor has. I can only see a couple of hands. I only see four people.
Councilor Franco, I have.
Councilor Baumgartner.
Several times.
Most people have? Okay, that's, that's good. And I, and I do want to remind the councilors that, you know, we have, there's a 17-acre Washington Park in the city side. And, and this would kind of help balance things out a little bit, the six acres on this side of town. And that's all I have to add. Thank you.
Councilors of Perry, do you have a question, sir?
I was just going to comment that the purpose of the meeting of this being presented now was to hear the input from the people that we've heard from. It's not to debate whether or not we should have ball fields or other things. And I, I, I think we should stick to that. I have some thoughts about the use of the property vis-à-vis athletic fields, but I'd like not to bring them up now. This is not a time to debate that issue. And we should move on with what we came here for.
Thank you, Councilors of Perry. I see a couple more hands. Is there anyone who hasn't asked any questions yet before I go a second time? Okay, and I would, please, I'd like you to remember the purpose of this evening. Council Franco, please.
I have brought fields being on this property before, and it is not brought up as a topic tonight. So it is something that can be an option for this property. It is not just my opinion, it is an option.
Okay, so I see no other hand. Council Borderline, do you have a question?
Yeah, my hand was up and you acknowledged that you saw several other hands, and so I was waiting.
And then you put your hand down, so go ahead.
Because you acknowledged that you saw two. Thank you. I also just want to rebuttal that I think just because these options were brought, brought forward does not mean that there's not other options. And so with all due respect to Councilor Zepiri, it's just looking at this that there could be other ways to utilize it. Just these few options doesn't have to be it. They're all great options, and I'm not saying I favor one or the other. But I just, hearing from the constituents, we have to consider sports fields as another topic. So how do we have another night then when we can add that to the agenda? Can I ask for some clarification on that then?
I would like to respond, yes. So the people that were invited to speak this evening were the people that were included in the report we received from staff. And in the report we received from staff, I believe it said that they were not in favor of sports fields on that property. However, Council Franco presented her view, and we accepted that, and that is one item that will be considered along with all the other speakers we've heard this evening over the next few weeks. So my suggestion would be, if any of you have questions on any of the options, including Council Franco's suggestion, you have a week and a half, two weeks to ask those questions and get your answers. And we will be back here at our next COW, where we will formally debate. And I'm sure in the meantime, we will hear from a lot more constituents. And I would ask you just to be open-minded and listen to, as, as we always do, listen to what our constituents are saying, but know that you are trusted with making the decision on this. So, Councilor Baumgartner, you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. And I just, you know, to my fellow councilors respectfully, you know, when I was speaking with our, our mayor about kind of how, what the best path forward would be to, to deliberate on these issues, you know, I was hoping that, you know, as you know, Brian Kent spoke tonight, and, you know, I had asked that he would speak last week, but, you know, the mayor put in place a process that, you know, I think honors the, you know, every, everyone's, you know, I, I think compassion for, for this issue. I know we all have, again, competing interests, but, you know, in the next coming weeks, we will be able to deliberate on what the best path forward is, where we will be able to engage, I think, in healthy banter. So I think in many ways, separating kind of that discussion from the fact finding is helpful. And, and I think in, in many ways, that, you know, having Brian and, and, you know, Ed, Ed Johnson, Fire District, Mike, you know, speak tonight, I, I think helped, you know, at least for me personally, to, you know, to, to look at this, you know, the, the path forward for the, the school property more better. So, so I think if we can all just work together and try to find a solution, I think that that, that's the best path we can take.
Thank you. And with that, I think we will say thank you to our guests this evening, and please, council, reach out to any of the guests if you have further questions, and come prepared for healthy banter, as Council Baumgartner says, at our next COW. Thank you all for coming out, and we will move on to 2020 380 Plastics Ordinance Delay. And there is no motion prepared. I believe Counselor Obree, was this your question? Would you like to lead your discussion or provide your rationale for this, please? You're muted, Counselor Obree.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, owning a business, I think perhaps some people talk to me because they own a businesses also. But I have been approached by several people saying that this would be a very difficult time to make additional changes. I received an excellent letter from Paul McGurk stating his feelings on it and the fact that it would be a hardship. And I, I do think right now, with all that we're going through, with trying to go through the reopening, the steps for the reopening, what they can, what businesses can do at this point, and what they could do at the next point, I think it would be excellent on the part of the, of the council if we could give them a breather and give them maybe a three-month delay in going with our new rules and regulations for plastics. And I hope everybody can understand the situation that most of our business people are in right now. There's a great loss of income and a lot of stress to get things back up and moving. And I hope you'll agree with me.
Council Baumgartner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A few questions to the town manager. Have any businesses reached out to the town seeking hardship variance?
Only one so far, Carson's in Noink. Though to be fair, with COVID, I'm not sure how many people have it in their minds, but.
Exactly.
So is there, maybe you're, we wouldn't be the best person to ask this question, but to whom would it benefit the most by delaying this ordinance, say, you know, if we're to go, go the route Council Obree suggesting, to whom would it benefit the most by delaying this? You know, would it be the restaurants? You know, fast food restaurants, or, you know, what, what businesses or restaurants would benefit the most from?
I would guess fast food, but Paige and John and Deb might have some other ideas, or Larry. Make sure everybody's permitted to speak too.
This is Paige. I, I think immediately the direct benefit would be for, to restaurants as a whole. as a whole. That is really the main focus, even outside of Groton. They've been harmed significantly. All commerce has been harmed, but specifically restaurants, many of them are really trying to figure out if they're going to survive long term. They're opening, it's the summer, but I would agree with the town manager, many of them are just not thinking about plastics right now. Not that it's something that they want to avoid, but they're just simply trying to survive.
Do any of the other people here wish to speak to this particular issue that Counselor Baumgartner raised? Mr. Dunn or Mr. Reiner? I'm just, I see hands, but I'm just trying to see if there are any more responses to the particular question I was asked.
Mr. Dunn does have his hand up.
Go ahead, Mr. Dunn.
I, I would concur with that assessment. I mean, the, the larger, I guess, the grocery stores, et cetera. I mean, they're actually not in that bad shape. And it's the one thing we can't do. But the restaurants, and the purpose of the delay that was built into the ordinance was to allow them to use their stock. And because they haven't been able to do that, you know, it's, you know, that, that to me was the, was the hardship to provide a more time to do it. And plus, the point raised that this not necessarily top of mind with all the other issues they have on their, on their plate. So that's, you know, that's why we support it to begin with. It's just, we wanted to keep it, keep it top of mind, but give them a little extra time to work down there. Thank you.
Okay, I see Counselor Heeden and Franco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two questions. Has the town staff begun the process of reaching out to businesses about, you know, to, to let them know about the ordinance? Or is that not yet started? And then the second question is, or I guess concern is, I mean, how much longer do we want to let our residents be taking hot food out of restaurants than styrofoam and plastic when we know that the sleet is into the, into the food? So that's all.
This is John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development. So we started doing a little bit of outreach on the plastics, but once we realized that the council is actually going to discuss this item at the meeting tonight, we decided to hold off doing additional outreach. In addition, the Economic Development Commission and Economic Development Staff was going to do some outreach. Oh, I want to say right around the end of March, but then this other thing happened that kind of threw a lot of our businesses into a, a little bit of a foray, a little bit of a problem. So we, we held off on doing a lot of the outreach yet. The ordinance doesn't go into effect until July 7th, so we still have some time. You know, the word has gotten out about this, but we haven't done kind of a big push at the very end.
And we have Counselor Franco and then Melendez.
I have sent some emails recently to the town council, letting them know some information about how my job has been going as a business manager. And I have to tell you, it is overwhelmingly stressful during dealing with this COVID. I can't imagine that there's any business in the community that is, you know, not having problems in dealing with issues. And just to delay this, postpone it a little bit, I can support that. I don't, even if we gave the extension, like even if it went into effect, I gave a three month extent, automatic extension to anybody who doesn't comply. I'd be okay with that as well. So it's implemented, but we're giving three months to whoever can't comply for three months. But it's on the books and, but everybody's got three months of leeway to at least get through COVID. Because I'm telling you right now, the last thing I would be thinking about right now is the plastic ordinance. I mean, with all the regulations that are consistently changing at the state level and trying to keep up with those and, you know, trying to get your PPEs that are, you know, you can't even get them and, and getting your staff back from unemployment. And it is overwhelming. And I've honestly been working overtime every single week since this started. And there's only two people in my job that have been full time during this whole thing and I'm one of them. And it is stressful. So I just want to put that out there that I support a postponement. I wouldn't mind having it go into effect, like I said, on July 7th, and then just have a three month waiver or on anybody who, and you don't even have to call in for it. You just get it for three months. Basically, that's how I would, I would say, because I don't know who has time to even be calling and who even be looking at this regulation while you're so focused on what's going on in state regulations. So, thank you.
Counselor Melendez?
Yeah, it seems like a reasonable request to me. We, we had built into a hardship provision. And I think we can all agree that every business has had some hardship. And just adding on to the fact that the rules of what we can and cannot do in business are changing daily. So it, it, it does seem like it's just a bit much for, I mean, the state stopped their, their plastic bag, they postponed their plastic bag thing for, for a little bit as well. We all agree this is important. That's why we passed it. But these are, these are a strange time. So I, I think three months, it, it's, it's reasonable.
Counselor Bordelain?
Yes, thank you. I could, I'm in favor of moving it forward. I think it's important that the process continues, the due diligence. I mean, the amount of people and the outcry of people that were against it and for it, and then to delay it, you know, completely would be kind of an insult to injury, I feel. So I feel that we should possibly continue forward with the, the, the date. You can, people can still apply for hardships as well as just maybe the three month grace period with really no penalty or no pressure. So it would just kind of be like Counselor Franco said, kind of just an open grace period for all. And that way we should be increasing our outreach, no matter at this point, I feel. And, you know, getting out to the businesses and, so I think that's a way to kind of, a middle road way to kind of meet the need of the, the ordinance, but also allow a non punishable grace period. Thank you.
Counselor Heed, did you wish to speak to this at all?
Not at the moment. Thank you.
So I don't know if I saw another hand. I'm sorry. I'm trying to keep track of names. Right now, the way, the way the ordinance is written, there is a provision for a hardship variance. And in order to get that variance, you have to file, I believe, a one page document. Is that correct, Mr. Burt? Is it a very simple document? I can't hear you, sir.
It is a one page document.
One page document. And you find that online?
Yes, it's on our website.
Okay. And if they file that document, then someone has to look at it and say, yes, we grant the variance or no, we don't grant the variance, correct? That's, that's the process right now.
Correct.
So as, as I think some of you were alluding to, you know, we should just automatically grant the hardship provision. That would give them the three months. We could still go forward with implementing this. The question would be, do we want businesses to still file the form and go through the, the formality of filing a form with the town and being granted the variance? Which I don't know if any of you wanted to speak to that. Counselor Obree?
I think that if you stop and think about where you've gone occasionally to get some takeout food or whatever it might be, other than a grocery store, you've seen people under great strain trying to work with a smaller staff, trying to get out good food, trying to take care of people the best they can without having interaction with them. I think the strain on our business people right now is, you know, just tremendous. And I think this council needs to say, okay, we understand what you're going through. We have a committee that's trying to work with people to guide them as they're doing things. But you can't really add to their burden right now. I mean, there's a lot of businesses that they might make it through the summer, but you may not see them come winter. They're not making their income. Even when they do open, there's going to be a large amount of people that still aren't going to feel comfortable to go out, to go out to eat, to go shopping in smaller places, et cetera. And economically, it's going to be felt by a lot of people. And I think we need to have the compassion and the understanding in order to be able to help these businesses and they know that we're standing behind them. Thank you.
So then you would not require them to file the, the request?
You know, that might be just the pro, just the step that would put somebody right over the edge one night going, I got one more thing. I can, I can't do it. I think we need to say to them, look, you got three months. We understand what you're going through. In three months, we hope we're going to see some changes on your part. If you can economically do it. If you can't, then we'll talk about a hardship. But right now, we just need to give them a grace period.
Okay. I just need every, we need to be clear on that where everybody is with this. So thank you for expressing that. Counselor Melendez?
Yeah, I, I, I think the same. I think people should have to fill out the form. It, it'd be a lot more work for town staff. We know every business has had hardship. So, you know, it, it's, it's not even like we have to question whether it's true or not. So, yeah.
So then Counselor Heed.
You know, I'm going to kick and scream off camera, but I can, I can accept the, the 90 day proposal for, I, I don't like it. And on the rare occasion that I'm calling for takeout now, I do request that the food not be put in styrofoam or plastic. But I, I guess you're winning the argument. So I, I can concede on this one.
Thank you.
So then, Mr. Burt, go ahead.
I was going to say, any forms I've received during this time, I would be automatically giving them the approval anyways. So it's sort of a wasted effort to require it.
So then how would the process work then? Do we need, do we need to take any action? It sounds like it's a consensus of the council to, to do this extension, if you will. So if we do nothing.
It's under my authority to generally give the extension. I would just have planning staff start reaching out to businesses to notify them that this has been extended for the 90 days and this is the new start date of it. We would get that out right away and let the newspaper know and all that.
My, my concern is, do we have to take any action as a council in order for that to happen? Or can we just leave it to you to carry out what we're expressing as our desires?
I don't think you're really, you know, because at this point, you can't amend the ordinance. It's in place and takes too long. So I don't really think, I think consensus is enough.
Okay. I see two hands still. So let's, let's let the other councilor speak and then we can, I'll call for a consensus, please. So Counselor Bordelain, Zepiri, and then I think I saw Franco.
Thank you. As I said before, I'm in support of the three months grace, but I think it's important how we word this. So if we're going to do some outreach and we're going to write reports, I think it should still state that yes, it's in effect on this date and anyone that can and will start it, we encourage you to. But if you can't, there is the three month grace period. I think it should be worded as such with the encouragement. I think that's the important part, just like we did with the taxes, right? Like you want people to still pay their taxes. So everyone has an obligation. So I think that way it still puts the onus that this is not going to keep snowballing and going away. It's if some people might already be prepared to start and want to start in July. And I think they should be recognized for doing such as well. The efforts that they've made and they've made a lot of changes already to start this. So that could be kind of frustrating not to have this stuff effective on that date too, you know, when they did all the things to make it on time. So I think the wording is important for me to support it. Thank you.
Now, we have Counselors of Perry and then Franco.
It seems that we considered this very issue a few meetings ago, and the council rejected the idea of, of giving a prolonged period of delaying the deadline for implementing the ordinance for plastic reduction. I am very happy to see that so many of the councilors have changed their opinions now and see the hardship that the, the different businesses are having and are proponents of delaying the ordinance implementation. However, I think we took a vote before indicating that we would not delay the ordinance. And so I think it would be important for us to take a vote again and officially say, we intend to delay the ordinance. Thank you.
I'm going, let's go to Counselor Franco first, then we'll discuss that.
Thank you. I, my question was more of the procedural and because it is an ordinance and we had set the, the time limits and everything. Can we investigate to make sure that there is, that there is nothing that the council has to do in a vote? And if so, can we bring it up on the 23rd for a quick procedural vote and then maybe bring it on?
Well, the thing is, you're going to want to get the word out pretty quick. So I don't think there's time to delay. And really, I, I don't know if it matters if you just at least take a vote, just, you know, rather than consensus, but take a vote but not bring it to a resolution. You really can't do, you know, you can't go against ordinance anyways, unless you're going to go through the ordinance amendment process. So a vote doesn't overly make sense. But if you want it just on record that you're approving that, that's great. But I would recommend not doing a resolution.
Right. But I'm saying like, if we need to do a resolution, can we do that on the 23rd and then maybe have a special council meeting to pass it?
Yeah, again, I don't, I don't think a resolution can actually amend the ordinance anyway. So I don't think it will be needed, but I can double check.
I was just curious. Thank you.
So, as has happened with other things going on in town right now, due to the public health crisis, the manager has had the ability to change some things that he would not normally be able to do during a normal time period. So we are still.
That's more related though to, in the benefit of health of the public.
Okay, so we can't go that way.
Safety and health.
Okay, so then.
Unless you want to call mental health. Unless you want to, I suppose you can make that case.
So let's just, let's just look at this logically for a minute and follow along and tell me where the flaw is. So this is set to go into effect on July 7th.
Right.
If we do nothing, technically, people should switch over, right? If people do not switch over and follow it, how do we know? How is there a, is there a complaint that has to be filed? And at that point, the complaint comes to you and at that point, you decide to take action? So if, if we just let this go into effect and did nothing else, we would assume there aren't going to be people complaining about this. And the only time that something would need to be done was if someone actually filed a complaint with you. And at that point, you could grant the hardship variance. Would that make sense? Could we go that way with it to keep it simple?
Well, if someone filed a complaint, you know, we, we have a process. We have our, you know, I think Tom, Tom Zanarini would be the one investigating to, to, you know, to determine if there's a violation. And, you know, the typical process, you give them notice then and you can make them aware at that point that there's a form to be filled out.
But you, you would be the one that would direct Mr. Zanarini to go?
Well, underneath John, yeah, but he's the one to sign. Right. They, they could call their director. They could call me directly. I would just pass it on to Tom.
Okay, so it, it sounds like we all want the, my take on what I'm hearing is that we all want the ordinance to go into effect as we had planned, but we don't want anybody injured. We don't want anybody to have to do any extra work at this point. And we don't want to penalize anybody at this point. Is that safe to say?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So then the issue becomes, what's the simplest way to do this?
Give them a three month extension.
We can't amend the ordinance though. If we amend the ordinance, then we have, in order to do that, we have to amend the ordinance, which is a huge process. So then is there, what's the simplest way, Mr. Burt, in order to make this happen?
Again, consensus is fine to me. Otherwise, a Again, consensus is fine to me, otherwise a vote, but without a resolution.
Okay, I see Councilor Zepary has his hand up again, and then I'm going to call for consensus on this. Councilor Zepary?
I'm lowering my hand.
That was quick. All right, so then, is, is there, and what I will need is-
And I do agree with Councilor Bordelons' comments about the letter. What I would do is, I assume John Reiner's still listening. We have an early version of it. We can tweak it and then we can shoot it to the council, just see if the majority are comfortable with it.
That sounds good.
I do like that approach, though.
Yes, I agreed. All right, so if you could just, I'm just going to ask, is there consensus to follow through with what we've just been talking about with not having any, what Councilor O'Bree expressed? Yes? Any objection to doing that? I'm seeing, Councilor Baumgartner, do you have objection to that?
No, I still love you, Councilor O'Bree.
Well, we have, we have seven councillors. We're not voting, but we're just taking consensus. So we have a majority of the council in consensus to, to do what Councilor O'Bree has expressed.
Okay, we'll get a letter to you ASAP.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Councilor O'Bree. I heard somebody, Councilor Bordelons, go ahead.
One question, so they're not having to fill out the form. I just want clarification for my notes here. They don't have to fill out the form, that we're going to grant them a three-month grace period?
Correct, but we will encourage them to proceed if able, as you recommended.
All right, great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dunn. All right, we are on to 5E 2023 27-1 land acquisition. And I'll just read the introduction for the public. "The Town of Groton Office of Planning and Development Services staff has been approached regarding the town's interest in purchasing a parcel of land for open space or recreation purposes. The Connecticut Deep issued a notice regarding the availability of grants for up to 75% matching funds for open space acquisition. Staff has had an appraisal completed for the property. The property owner has indicated their willingness to sell the property to the Town of Groton." I'm going to throw this to Mr. Reiner first, and he can speak to this issue and give us any appropriate cautions, Mr. Reiner.
Good evening, John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. So the few things, little bits of caution I would ask of the council as we have this discussion. So we are still in negotiations with the property owner. We have not signed a purchase and sales agreement. We do not have an option agreement. I would encourage the council at this point in time not to talk specifically about what property it is, nor the exact value of the property that we're talking about, because that severely impacts our ability to negotiate a fair price for purchasing the property.
Thank you. So at this point, does anyone, any councillors wish to speak to this? Seeing none. Do we have consensus to move this aside? Oh, Mr. Burt, did you want to present? I'm, I'm looking, I'm seeing some faces that are paying attention now, so I'll give it a second.
Nothing for me.
Okay, Councilor Bordelons.
So what are we asking completely then? We can't discuss numbers, I understand, and all that. So we're just talking about it in general? There's no motion made?
We have-
Do you want, when we first were talking about this, we had started a resolution just in case we needed it. I could use, give you that resolved as a potential starting point for a motion if you're interested. I don't know if that makes sense.
I wasn't looking for a motion, but I think if a motion is put on the floor, I just want to say for the record that it's important to look at the whole thing and numbers are important piece of this, even though we can't discuss them as far as how you would vote. So it makes it kind of tough, you know what I mean?
Though council members, as a reminder, were given the approximate numbers discussed in executive session.
Right, no, I'm, I'm stating that. And so the importance of all that is a big part of a decision of, is what I'm trying to say for the, the audience who's not part of executive session. Thank you.
We have Councillors Heed, Melendez, Baumgartner and O'Bree. Councilor Heed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not sure what we're here to discuss, but what I will say, I think this is what we're supposed to discuss. Do we want the town staff to go forward with an application grant to the DEP where they could get up to 75% of the purchase of the property? I, I am in favor of that.
That is what we're here to discuss, sir. Councilor Melendez?
Yes, I recently learned about the state's goal of having 21% of Connecticut's land to be protected. Is this anybody, just, just for the knowledge of the average, you know, person watching, does anybody know approximately how much of Groton is protected land?
This is John Reiner. Approximately 14% of Groton is protected land. When you factor in the Groton Utilities land, I believe that number actually comes closer to 20 or 21%.
Okay, when you said, when you can factor in what land?
The, the land that is held by Groton Utilities, which is they have a lot of protected land around and in the watershed of what they're, where their, where the drinking water in town comes from.
Okay, okay. Thank you. And just, yeah, just to reiterate, the state was a 21% goal. So it seems like we're a little short, at least.
Thank you, Councilor Baumgartner, and then O'Bree.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to lend my marks. Moved by Councilor Melendez. As Mr. Reiner stated, Groton possesses about 14% of open space as a share of, you know, all, all land in, in the town. And I, I think this property purchase, assuming we were to get at, you know, at, at least 75% or at most 75% of those funds to purchase the property from the state, I think it would behoove all residents and taxpayers to, to make that investment in Groton's future so, in order to protect our environment. So I am very much in favor of submitting this grant application to the state of Connecticut. Thank you.
Councilor O'Bree.
Well, last time when we were discussing this, was when I asked for an adjournment because we were so far apart on any kind of an agreement. I still feel that there has to be certain items that are done in order to protect, protect the town. I, I, I am having a very difficult time with this because I just question the timing. I would not, if the council, the rest of the council was in favor, I certainly would not do anything to, to not go forward. But I would like to see what kind of guarantees are going to be put in, as I mentioned before. It's very difficult to discuss. You know, my biggest thing is that if the grant is for 75%, and I don't want us to be in a position that if we don't get the grant, we have to pay the 100%. And when we spoke about it last time, that was not part of anything that had been talked about. So I still have my concerns about this. And I also have concerns about the town right now paying that other 25%.
Councilor Bordelons.
I still have concerns. We discussed this as well. I think with all that's going on in our economy, we were just grappling over paper plates and people being able to afford that. We didn't fund the bridge, well, because the other side wasn't going to fund it. We didn't fund certain outside resources. We didn't fund a lot of things in our budget this year and to bring land, I can't say the dollar amount right now because I'm not allowed to. But that's a big determining factor for me. And also, like Councilor O'Bree stated, we're not guaranteed that we're going to get that full percent. I think it's a great opportunity. It just unfortunately comes at a bad time and I would hate to see that down the road, as we're looking at our rainy day fund, which people didn't want to spend any of that either, and increased tax rates and the mill rate and all of that, and, and didn't fund any of it. And now we want to purchase some land on top of that. That's really hard to take in as a taxpayer saying, well, we'll buy some land. Oh, and your, and your taxes are going to go up too. And, oh, but we didn't fund this. So I think it's really important, with everything going on, we have a lot of things going on with civil rights things in our, in our community and people wanting other things funded for the betterment of, of the good of all. And looking at, you know, the COVID incidents and the decrease in job stability in our town. I would hate to say that, sorry, we have to lay a few people off, but you know what? We got some land. And I don't think it's the right time. I think we need to be fiscally responsible. And based on the numbers that was presented by John Reiner, with the watersheds, we do meet those numbers. Other land is coming, I'm sure, and other opportunities. But I just think this is just kind of falling at the wrong time. And it's hard to attach my name to something and support something where most people aren't purchasing things like this. This would be kind of, you know, is it something we really truly need at this moment? We also tonight talked about no-ink gardens and another piece of open space. We have a lot of open space and I, and I think we can, it would be nice to have more. But unfortunately, we have to do, we have to look at the cost. So I just would like to table this idea and, and, and bring it back up at a later time when we move a little bit forward and know a little bit more where we're going. We could still have a COVID spike. Working in the medical field myself, I, I worked through all of this. Some hours were cut, but we're preparing for a spike in layoffs again possibly and doctors catching it. I, I just don't know that the land is, is something right now we should be putting a, a number to. And, and then not using any of the rainy day fund and increase in taxes and now purchasing land. I don't know, that seems a little splurged to me for the town and, and I, I, I don't know if I can support it. Thank you.
I would like to, just so we can move this along a little bit, I would like to make a motion to recommend a resolution authorizing the staff to pursue the grant.
I'll second that.
Moved by Granatowski, seconded by Baumgartner. Okay, Councilor Franco.
Mr. Reiner, you had mentioned that there with Groton Utilities, there was 20 to 21% of open space. Does that help the property, like Bluff Point, in our, in our area of Groton?
So when I talk about the 14%, that includes state property like Bluff Point. The Groton Utilities property is, some of their property is protected because of the way that they purchased it, but not all of it is necessarily deed restricted protected property.
And we do know more, like 108 acres is trying to be put in as well. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, which 108 acres where?
Be Groton. Is there some kind of future possibly, Groton Open Space, maybe putting in 108 acres?
Oh, AGOSA is working on a piece of property now also.
Which is approximately 108 acres, is that correct?
I don't have the acreage right in front of me.
Also, when you were looking, you were looking at, which is 75%. Is that the only grant you looked at? Because, did you look at the Recreation and Natural Heritage program?
We did not look at that grant. We looked at this grant initially because of the 75% match and the deadline that it had.
Right. Do you know that the Recreation and Natural Heritage program will pay for 100% and this land qualifies for that?
It was brought to my attention that this land qualified for it back in 2006 or 2008. It still may qualify for it, and that's something we certainly could look into.
Okay, and then, so we, there is still a potential that this could be covered 100% and the town would have to pay anything. And in our executive session discussions, we talked a little bit about this property. And from what I'm, I'm understanding, it has, it's hard to talk about this without divulging what I'm so much. But from what I'm understanding, there's a lot of swampland and it's not a lot of developable property. And the grant that you're talking about applying for annually, and we can apply for this grant next year as well. And so, well, if it's not really ideal development property, and I don't think anybody's been jumping at the bits for it for quite some, like, I, I hear there was something in the past few years, but nobody's been jumping at the bits for it, that this probably can wait as a decision until next year. Due to our economic climate that we're dealing with and and potentially even looking at the Recreation and Natural Heritage program, we may get 100% funding and the town wouldn't have to spend anything. This is something I think should wait as we've cut, made massive cuts to our budget. And we don't even know what the state's going to be funding for us in the coming years. And so let me ask you another thing. On this matching, it's a matching grant kind of thing, is this some state, state matching? Is it loss of money?
This is a, a state grant where, that they have on a state bond funds. And they're looking for a local or other types of match. So for example, if we could get local conservation organizations or others to contribute towards our 25% match, that would help us.
Okay, so otherwise, Mr. Burt, where would the fund-
Otherwise, we would have to look at something like the general fund, fund balance. You, there's a little bit of money in open space acquisition. John, is that still around 90,000? Is it up there in that range still?
It's somewhere in that ballpark, yes.
Yeah, so some would be, first you would use that and then you would go to the general fund.
Right. I know it's hard to talk about the property. I don't know if this is allowed, but how long had this property been for sale?
This property was under option for a number of years by a development firm. I don't think that it's actively on the market right now. The owner approached us to see if we were interested in buying it for open space acquisition purposes, and that's what started this conversation.
Okay, and would there be a possibility to discuss with the owner that if you would maybe hold on to it for a year and not throw it up on the market and we can revisit this next year?
I, I think that's definitely a possibility. After the council meeting two weeks ago, an executive session, I informed the property owner that we didn't get a consensus in the executive session on either a price or moving forward at this point in time. And that maybe we could look at applying for it under next year's possible deep open space grant. I think also if we applied in for next year's deep open space grant round in talking with some, a local conservation organization, they thought that they could help do some significant fundraising towards the property also. Nothing committed, just a verbal conversation.
Okay, so there is a potential that if we do not pass this tonight, that they can, we can revisit this next year and he might be amicable to that.
Yes.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Councilor Heed.
Thank you. It seems like we're talking a little bit more. So I'll go ahead and share just a few more thoughts. You know, I understand we're in the COVID pandemic right now. I understand, you know, there's a lot of concern. We, we cut a lot out of the budget and all that, but this is, with life is, life still goes on. You know, we still have to conduct our daily business. We still have to eat breakfast, lunch and dinner. You know, things, things are still going to happen, but 50 years from now, nobody's going to remember COVID-19. They will remember whether or not we put a piece of property under, you know, protected space that people can enjoy. So I, I think, and, and just a footnote, I, Councilor O'Bree brought up a good point. My assumption in supporting that is, this is, is that we will be getting assistance. But I, you know, I, I think, I think it's a win-win proposition for us and, and we should move forward.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Councillors- Thank you. I'm going to go, um, to Counselors of Perry to see if he would like to speak, as he hasn't spoken yet before we go to second time.
Oh, okay. I, I, I feel the same way I felt when we, uh, when we considered this last time. We have a chance of getting a 75% of, uh, grant to cover this expense. That reduces our, the town's expense greatly. We have no assurance of getting that in the future. It is a piece of land that we will regret not having if we lose it altogether. I think everybody's comments about concern for the pandemic and the economic crisis that is at its cost are valid. And I think we have to weigh between the two of them. My feeling is that I think this is too good an opportunity to pass up. And I think we should at least give Mr. Reiner the go ahead to apply for the grant. If we don't get the grant, we don't have to go ahead with the purchase. But if we get the grant, I think we should stick our necks out and do it.
Thank you. I'm going to take my turn to speak now. Uh, I'll just align myself with Counselors of Perry, Bumgardner, Heed and Melendez in, um, wishing to go forward with the grant application. Counselor Bordelon, you had your hand up?
Yeah, um, with all due respect, uh, no disrespect to Counselor Heed, um, I think in 50 years, people are, are going to think of the COVID-19 over a land purchase. Um, people lost their lives and losing their livelihoods and jobs. So it, it, it's, it's a major event. So when I say the COVID and the land, it's, it's, it's a money issue. And, um, if we can hold off and do this next year, I'm in full support of it. I'm a person that feels like keep your, you know, we need to pro, process what's happening. And I think based on our actions as a council, we were, we reserved. And I think it's just not right to dip into rainy day fund or partial fund here or there to meet the needs of, um, the land. Um, when we didn't meet the needs of other items on our budget, um, that directly affected, um, taxpayers. Um, I understand the urgency and there's a chance that we might not get this land opportunity again. But sometimes we have to take risks and I, I think it's the right thing if there has already been discussion to possibly hold till next time. I think that's, uh, a great option. I think we should table this and bring it back up, um, with the possibility that let's see how the fall goes. Maybe it won't be next year. Maybe the council can come to an agreement, say in October. And, um, therefore the, the grant might not be able to be done until next year, but at least we can have an agreement with the, the seller and see how we weather the storm over the next few months. Is that a possibility? From John or anybody from the town?
Sorry, um, in this format, sometimes it's hard, uh, who the, uh, question is directed at.
That's all right.
I think, uh, no, it's okay. I think we could revisit this, um, with the owner and work with them to apply for this for next year. That is not something that was, uh, out of the realm of possibilities when I spoke with him last.
Right. And so I guess my thought is like, oh, let's say, you know, October, November, let's see if we had the surge of COVID again and, and, um, negotiate with the seller and say, you know, um, okay, we see where things are, um, and, and they're willing to wait. And then we can apply for this for next year and move forward, but maybe come up with some agreement. That we are going to apply next year and, and, and move forward in that direction. I, I think we should table this item personally. To table this.
The Bordelon has made a motion to table this. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of tabling this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Obree, Bordelon, Franco, all those opposed, please say nay. Motion is not tabled. I'm seeing no other hands, so I will call for a vote.
I had my hand up before, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I didn't see your hand raised. Counsel Franco.
I would like to ask, uh, Mr. Burt, well, you had sent out an email stating that this had to be on the last town council, um, agenda. And we had to, we had to make a decision by last week. And you said the town staff did not have time to do the gra, grant application by the deadline. And now it's a moot point and that this couldn't go forward. So a two-part question here, how did this get on the agenda to go forward after you just said that last week? As well as does the town staff have time with every, with everything going on?
Mr. Burt, may I jump in for a minute, please? It got on the agenda because we had five counselors that were interested in having it on the agenda. I will go to Mr. Burt right now to answer the other question.
Sure. Once this came back up, uh, John talked to, discussed with his staff, uh, essentially to get it done. And it's not guaranteed it can, can be done. They were trying to divvy it up among different people to work on parts of it. There's a lot to be done. It's not a guarantee. They would give it their all, but, uh, you know, it's not, they'll do what they can.
So in the midst of everything else going on in the town, we are going to stretch our departments thin to apply for this grant. And they might not even get it completed because now we're past our deadline of when you asked us to make a decision. So again, may I ask, like, how did this get on the agenda if just last week, the town manager told the council, this was a moot point and we weren't going forward with it?
As I said earlier, five counselors requested that it be on the agenda, so it is on the agenda. And we are up for discussion and I'm looking, I see counsel, I'm sorry, is that it? Cause another counselor has her hand up as well. Can I move on to the next counselor?
Thank you.
Counsel Bordelon.
Yeah, I, I aligned my marks with Counselor Franco to, um, not, you know, not quoting her, but when this was brought to us and the vote was against this, it didn't, wasn't going to appear. And town staff stated that there would be no time and now it's on. So that's fine if it's able to be brought back up again. But I just think that, um, at the time the decision was made and there was more support, um, against this. And, um, and that's why it didn't move at the time. So it is confusing to me is how, um, it would. And I don't with stretching the staff thin, um, last minute, um, for a grant of money that we may not get the whole amount. So by approving this, I guess the question is, can we have something amended number in there stating if it comes back under 60% that we don't take it or under 50, or we're all in no matter what if we apply? Could someone answer that?
I, I, I think we could work something like that into the resolution. Also, we don't have an option agreement on the property yet. We don't have a purchase and sales agreement. If we entered into any purchase and sales agreement, um, I would encourage, you know, that we would have in there that this is subject to the town getting grant funds of approximately 75% to cover the majority of the cost of the purchase. And then one of the quick point, just to, um, I think a couple of people have said it. I'm very concerned about staff having the ability to complete this grant on time. We were concerned about a tight turnaround time two weeks ago when we were in executive session. I know that the state had extended the grant deadline to July 1st and that some additional paperwork is not due until August 1st. But it's, uh, that dealing with some of the referrals as well as the, uh, appraisals, which we would need to get a second appraisal or review of our appraisal done, but it's, it, it's a heavy lift and we're already stretched, stretched very thin. Our, our office has been very busy through all of the, um, COVID pandemic. Um, so I'll, I'll just leave it at that.
My last piece to my, my point, and thank you, is that also I feel like we almost need to go in executive session to talk about this a little bit further. Um, and to make a vote on this tonight, since I can't talk numbers openly, um, I have some questions, concerns that pertain to actual numbers that I feel that I can't answer at this time. So I can't make an informed vote without the ability to go back into executive session to speak about this. Is that a possibility? John, uh, Burt, manager or John Reiner, what? I mean, I think to make an actual vote on something, I have to be able to, to speak openly about it. And so moving forward with this, I have some further questions that are more detailed that I can't discuss openly now.
So I just wanted to say one thing first, just to correct the record, there was no vote taken in executive session. You cannot take votes in executive session. There was not a majority consensus at that point. That's why we are at the point we're at right now. I do not believe we can go into executive session. We have a motion on the floor that is pending a vote. There was already one attempt to table that failed.
My question again is how do I get my?
I have the floor, excuse me. It seems the consensus of the council is to move forward with this and bring it to a vote. So that's where I am right now. I think we need to move forward with this and either it will pass or it will fail. But, uh, there is a motion on the floor and I think we should go in that direction and take our vote. So then, you want to respond in any way?
When do we make the corrections to amend the numbers if we don't get the full amount? How do we protect ourselves and the taxpayers?
Well, right now you're making, right now you're only making a motion for us to proceed. We have to write the resolution, which will, we would have to bring it to, to the Cow on the 23rd. We'd have a special, not to the Cow itself, we have a special council meeting to approve it that night. Because you have to have it in by July 1st, which would be before the next regular council meeting.
So would we have an executive session before that to discuss any of the details that may be coming out behind this?
That's up to the council. However, I think, uh, you have to vote first on this unless.
I get that. I'm, I'm asking, I'm predicting the chain of events for full transparency.
So that's entirely up to the council.
Okay. So I'd like to make a request to make sure that if this does move forward, that we are able to have an executive session to, to speak about numbers and wording, um, moving forward. Thank you.
Counsel Obree.
I think that, uh, we're overlooking what John Reiner just shared with us, that he, he questions the ability to make this happen also. And I think it would be, uh, unfair on our part to put that kind of a burden on him with what they were already carrying. Uh, you know, they've been very involved with everything with the Corona. I know that their, their timelines are pretty full. And he just stated that, uh, he questioned, you know, making this happen. So that's who we should be listening to.
Counsel Bumgardner.
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to remind the council that, um, Mr. Reiner came to us months ago, uh, to discuss this property. Obviously, um, a lot has changed in that COVID-19 pandemic. And, um, but since then, he, uh, came back to us, um, seeking approval for, um, in our permission to submit this grant to the state. So again, we are not, again, uh, making any money to it. We are applying for the grant. There again, as a likelihood, we may not receive the grant. So, um, you know, I, I encourage everyone to just be mindful of that. And, um, again, I, I hope we can, um, take this to a vote very soon.
Counsel Franco.
So as a council, we would like to go forward with this grant that says 75% would be covered. Instead of trying to go for a grant that 100% would be covered with the same, with the property that has been tagged, for a different grant that we could get 100% possibly covered on this. I don't understand the, the reasoning here. I can clearly hear the town staff saying they don't want to go forward now. Two weeks ago, they were willing to, but now they're, they sort of have a different viewpoint now as it's been two weeks. And we didn't have it on the agenda last week. If there was consensus two weeks ago, this should have been on the agenda last week and it was not placed on the agenda. So why did it take another week? And, and gone past the deadline, we were told in executive session. I think this is not, um, this is not conducive to how we should be doing business here in Brown. And now we're sitting here, we can't go into executive session, we can't just discuss numbers. We can't even discuss if we wanted to, what are, what we want to even say. Um, so within the next two weeks, we don't have a meeting next week, so we have one meeting that we're going to wrap everything up in one meeting and we're going to make an offer to somebody. And then, I mean, like, I just don't know how you think this is going to go forward and I think this is a bad decision. And if we didn't use fund balance, we definitely shouldn't be using fund balance right now. And as Mr. Reiner said, the landowner is probably willing to hold and wait for us. There's no big rush and I don't see anybody rushing to buy this property. He doesn't even have it for sale, he just said. It's not listed, it's not posted. And he's looking to work with us. So maybe he would wait. It, I think from what I've understood, it's been in that, I mean, his, it's been his property for quite some time. So I don't know why we're all sudden rushing with two weeks to go before the deadline and trying to put our staff out straight within the middle of a pandemic and all they're dealing with. So I'm just honestly amazed that there's been a turn of events, shall I say, in the last couple of days, I guess.
So the reason why it was not on the agenda last week was because it was a council meeting last week and we need things to go through committee first. So we are in committee of the whole right now. Counselors of Perry.
In our executive session, it would have to come to the town council meeting and we could discuss it there.
My understanding, my understanding of what we're dealing with is that we have a possibility of getting a grant that would pay 75% of this. And, uh, if we don't get the grant, or if we're not happy with the amount of grant that is awarded, we can decline at that point. But right now, the only thing we're considering is an application for the grant. And when the grant comes in, um, we can decide to go ahead. There is nothing here where we are committing to expend funds from the town treasury. It's, we are committing to apply for a grant and then go forward and make decisions from that point. That's about it.
If I might.
Counsel Bordelon first, please. Bordelon and then Obree.
We can't do it that way. We have to have a contract to go for the grant. So you'd have to draw your contract with your contingencies in order to even move forward. So it's not just putting in for the monies. There's a lot more to it.
Counsel Bordelon had her hand up. Go ahead.
What about the cost of the town staff? John Burt, um, how many hours are we looking at town staff and, and taxpayer, you know, paying time, um, to do this? Uh, on top of everything else to meet this deadline now?
That would be a John Reiner question. He's the one that's been looking at it.
For the, and the possibility that it may go nowhere. So we, are we willing to take those kinds of risks right now? I mean, like, there's other things in our town so urgently pressing, um, that I feel that this should be tabled, as I asked, and, and can wait. There wasn't a consensus, not a vote, yes, at the time. And then over the last week, since then, things have changed, I guess. That's fine. Everyone has a right to change their mind. But I do have trouble taking money out of any other funds and putting the staff flat out and, um, to, to a possibility of not the right percent and then shooting it all down after they basically worked hard on something that it, it comes back at 50% and then we say no. So, I don't know, I just, it doesn't, it doesn't jive with me. And I, I think with all the movement going on in this country and looking at where funds are going and what we're funding and how we're funding things, I hope that the same thunder to purchase land in the midst of a COVID can.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote on recommending a resolution to authorize staff to pursue a grant.
I was still waiting on my question about how many hours it would take of staff's time. John had asked, said John Reiner would have a better answer for that. Thank you.
Okay, uh, John Reiner here. Um, I think that it would require Deb Jones to pretty much drop most of what she's doing right now and focus on this, uh, until the grant is due. Some of my time, we actually don't need a contract, um, a signed purchase and sales agreement with the owner. But we would need some agreement generally on a number. So we would know what number we'd be looking for. So I would have to be doing a fair bit of work with the property owner as well as our town attorney, maybe just crafting up some type of letter of agreement or something. So we had, uh, some level of an understanding. And I know other staff, um, in the planning department would also have to put, uh, a fair amount of time into this also.
So looking at that number, where would that number be generated from since we can't negotiate that? So looking at that number, where would that number be generated from since we can't negotiate that or talk about it because we're not having any, time for executive session? Is that just something between you and John? Or how would that number work to?
So I think the one bit of clear direction I did get at the council executive session is that no council members would support going any higher than the appraised value of the property. And I think I would I would try to do better than that. So.
Okay. As I said, we have a motion on the floor. I will call for a vote on recommending a resolution to authorize town staff to pursue the grant. All those in favor, please say aye. Zepary? Bumgardner? Hede? Melendez? Granatowski? Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Franco? Obrey? Bordelain? And zero abstentions. That motion passes five in favor, three opposed, zero abstentions. Thank you, Mr. Reiner, Ms. Jones. We are on to item six, review of agenda items. Mr. Burt, is there anything you wanted to go over?
There is nothing.
We are on to item seven, other business. Does any councillor have any other business? Councillor Bordelain and then Franco.
I would like to make a request that we start to talk about some of the civil unrest items that people are discussing in this town and making those priorities and topics that we're discussing. Some of the stuff that we're bringing up is not necessarily at the forefront of everything else going on. I would like to see some more COVID updates and things like that and what we're doing. Is there any plan to move the ball in any of that direction? I think we need a review board looking at how excessive force is being done in the town, if any, how we are processing complaints and who's involved in those complaints processes. Making sure that there's a, a committee that this stuff is referred to that is not directly involved. And also the minority recruiting. The DEI meetings, I think, can be a little bit, maybe another committee should be formed in a different capacity to address some of the social unrest and making sure that our town is doing the best it possibly can to address some of the needs of the town. So the minority recruiting, looking at that process, how in which our town decides to move when accepting applications as a whole, positions that are open and how long we're filling them and, and, and reporting back on more expansive. I know originally when I first joined the council, I asked about minority recruiting. They said, oh, they don't apply. And that was my, the response. And, but we really need to reach out further. If we're truly minority recruiting, we should be contacting urban areas and breaking through that threshold to really putting money into finding some true stakeholders of, of diverse background. You know, that, that should be a priority.
Mayor, can I speak?
If Councillor Bordelain has finished.
So those are some of the things I'd like to see. Tabling of this, other, other items that really aren't directly affecting the town right now, or just, you know, we, we need to be showing our community that we are supporting them. And being responsive to the, the concerns and needs of our constituents. I will reach out to Chief Rosaro and do a cruise run with him. I do have a little bit of background in criminal justice as a major and I'm really familiar with community policing and I'll, I'll request a ride to do that. I'll do my part. But I think that we need to be getting more updates to the council and as to what's going on. And I sometimes feel that we're, I don't know, I don't know if it's the way the government is structured. Is it a rules thing? You know, more reporting on, on, on that avenue. Thank you.
Mr. Burt, you have the floor.
Sure. And I think Councillor Bordelain might forget, yes, we have had trouble getting minority applicants, but that's part of why the DEI committee was formed and among staff who know the processes. Before we do anything, you need to hear from the DEI, DEI committee who've been studying this for almost three years, as well as the HR department. And I will remind, there was a lot more information given to Councillor Bordelain early on, including, she happens to be my neighbor. We've had talks when I formed the DEI committee, when I moved into her neighborhood. So I think she's forgotten some of that. But the first step is we do need to hear from the people who have been looking at this for three years before we try to start a new committee. And in terms of the police, the first step is Chief Rosaro will be coming in two weeks to talk with the council. I'd ask council members for questions. We had a legal expert, outside attorneys who specialize in put these policies, worked for the last four years or so on the policies. So that's a good starting point is to be looking at what's been done.
I'd like to respond to that. With all due respect, I do not appreciate saying that I had forgotten. I'm one of the ones that stressed this. The committee, at the time when I got on, was not very active, nor were we getting many reports from this DEI committee. It only is recently, in the last several days, that they've recently met. So with all due respect, many times I've asked, and I think our review process and our position in this town, way before any of us were ever involved in this town, has not been in the position of minority recruiting. So that's not an insult to anyone directly. It's me advocating once again the need for, you know, communication and information. So if this committee has been studying it for however long, I would like to see more expansive reports, but they have not been meeting. And they only recently started to meet back up and only recently opened it up to the council. And that's no disrespect to that committee. So I'm asking for something a little bit more transparent. I personally think with all that's going on in this community, that a separate committee on top of your DEI, there's other committees about, you know, looking for your rules and this. Why don't we have another, we can form another committee to address this. And I, I think there is a need. And I think we would get community outreach from that. So, you know, no disrespect, Mr. Burt. That's not an insult to you by saying that. I didn't forget. And I remember when you reached out to me, when you guys recently hired someone in the town hall that was of, of, of a minority background. So I'm not saying it hasn't happened, but I think from all municipalities, something's gone wrong in this town. And from Board of Ed, all the way through, which that's an elected position. So, but from our schools all the way through, we are lacking representation. And that's my cry out. And if I may have forgotten, I apologize. I did have other and more important things on my plate dealing with my medical situation. But I did reach out and I've been asking since I got involved. And this DEI committee has not, I haven't seen much paperwork. Is there any other reports other than the one from the other day?
Well, we will have them come before the council and give you an update. I've given council update early on. Bob has been trying to do things of, we've brought, we've talked to different people out in a variety of places on how to get the word out, how to recruit. Bob does post at other spots. So we will bring a presentation to you. That is the place to start.
Right, but this is only a recent development in the last year. So it hasn't really been an expansive, in-depth involvement on sustained involvement in this. So.
It's been a couple of years, but yes. It's been over two years. It's been more than two years.
But there's been no reports?
Well, I've mentioned different things. We are working. I used to give regular reports in my weekly reports to the council.
With all due respect, I'm asking for a more expansive reporting process so that people in the community can hear exactly what's being done. Our review process on hiring in this town of minorities.
Yes. We need to start with that actual staff involved, as well as the, there's unions involved, there's our attorneys involved, and we need to start with that. And then we can go somewhere else from there.
Right. So I'm asking for a more transparent process that has more involvement. Thank you.
Okay, we have several councillors that wish to speak, and I just need to note that Councillor Hede had to step away. So we are at seven councillors. We have Councillor Franco, Zepary and Melendez. So in that order, please. Thank you.
Just say Franco first, I'm sorry.
Yes, you have the floor.
Thank you. I would like to make a referral so that the economic development department can come and give us a report on what they're doing with the COVID situation to help businesses in our community and get the information out and how they're reaching out to everybody and and maybe a report on what they're hearing and feeling within our community so we can understand and know what's going on. I'd also like human services to give us a report as well to let us know how food insecurity is doing in our community. With, I know there's been a lot of fundraising for them and, and from what I'm understanding, they've been pretty busy. And recently, they were asking if they have a shortage of food, certain food items, and they were requesting the community to donate. So I was wondering how they've been doing and what are, what are their things that have been helping our community with it? And also I would like the DEI committee that to have a presentation as well, just so I'm fully aware of what they're all about. And I am excited that the police chief is coming to on the 23rd and giving his report. And I appreciate that. Thank you.
And we are currently pretty much filled up on our agenda for the next Cow. It'll probably be then, it might be hard to have them all in at the same Cow for the rest of those reports. I don't know. Maybe we can break them up into two meetings in, in July.
So the COVID issues, we're going to wait till July?
Well, it's up to the council as of now that we'd have to drop some things from, and we also have to do regular business in the town too. The police will take a fair amount of time. The police aren't coming at the next meeting.
The 23rd, yes.
Okay, let me see who was next. Councillors Zepary and then Melendez.
I had to, I'm sorry, I had to step away to go to the bathroom after two and a half hours of, of sitting here in front of my computer. And I missed most of what Councillor Bordelain had to say. So would it be too unkind of me to ask her to say it again?
Sure, I don't mind. What I'm asking for is more transparency. I'm asking for this DEI committee that is formed, that now, after a meeting a couple of days ago, now is opened up to councillors that I have not seen any reports from, like official reports and working. I'd like to see more of that and the structure of it. I also was not asked to be a part of the DEI, to come up with any ideas on how to structure and what it should look like. I think it's important that we reach out to a more diverse background to have people involved in that, considering this is a hot ticket item for me when I got on. I, I think also the police force, excessive force, looking at all of that, who's, how it's being reported and who's reviewing those materials for our town. I like information on that. Making sure that we are using best practice. What is our excessive force? And, and minority recruiting, you know, I'd like some reporting out on the applications that come in. What percent are we getting in and, and seeing how in which we process. Obviously, I want the best candidate, but I want to see what percent so that we know how we're targeting it. When I first got on and I asked, they weren't really branching out very far at all. And I said, have you guys contacted black colleges or? So it sounds like we need help in direction on how to actually minority recruit is what I'm trying to get at. So that's where I'm at. And I'd like, I would like a separate committee, besides a DEI, to be formed to tackle some of these issues and, and, and get a, a committee together. Thank you.
Thanks, Councillor Zepary. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I, I only wondered, what is the percentage of the race mix of the town's population? Do we have any data on that?
Mr. Burt, I don't have it off the top of my head.
Off the top of my head, no.
But to get proportional representation in government and in government positions, we would have to know what would proportional representation be.
So I just wanted to respond in the interest of transparency regarding the diversity, equity and inclusion committee. They began with doing internal work to address some of the factors that we've all been discussing here to make sure that town staff was first trained in the issues of DEI. Second, no one was asked to be on the committee as far as council goes. The reason this came to be is because I asked about the committee and how we could get started with the diversity council. And we discussed this and it was decided that we should start with something we have in place first. And so we were trying to use the DEI committee that was in existence to train town staff and branch out from there to the community. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear to everybody. Councillor Melendez, you have the floor.
Yeah, I just wanted to basically just say the things that you were just saying right now. We were not asked to be on the DEI committee. We were asked to sit in a meeting because someone from the community contacted the mayor and said, we should have one of these. Then it was a brainstorming session of, oh, we have something kind of like this, but it's a little different. We can repurpose it. No, no one was asked to be on it without anybody else getting looked over. At the meeting, they decided that they wanted to open it up to the council. Everybody has been asked if they want to participate in it. You can now participate in it if you want to. If you feel like you, you, you can do it better than everybody else, then go ahead and throw your, throw your name in the ring. But I take offense honestly because they, they had been meeting every month. Yes, they, they stopped meeting every month because of COVID-19. And, and, and now this is their opportunity to start up again. I, I met with each, I heard each and every one of them speak. This was very important to them. And they've been working very hard on this for years. So to insinuate that this is not important to, to, to the town staff or to the police department or anything is actually offensive to, to the town, town staff to me, because I listened to them speak. And, and it was very important to them. So I just feel like people should maybe listen to, to people before, before they, they cast judgment on them.
Mr. Burt, did you want to say anything? I have another councillor with the hand.
I was just going to mention, there's about 30 members now in that committee representing a wide variety of like, or like ledge light and, you know, really in different places. So, you know, we have a lot of expertise in there. We do, though I will say we need more people of color and diversity on that committee. So I'm eager to expand that and everyone wants that. So.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm waiting for responses. I have two responses so far of councillors who are interested. So please just reply to my email that I sent and we'll hear you out. Councillor Bordelain, you have the floor.
The email that was sent, my understanding, it was just that there is no official committee members. You just show up to the meeting. So I didn't know that it warranted a response. I just want to double clarify.
No, I sent one saying who would like to be on the committee.
Oh, so there is an actual committee now that you can be a part of? I just want to make sure I understood, because the way that I read the last one, it was that it's opened up to the councillors and other people to be on it. So now you can be an actual committee member?
Anyone can attend the meetings. They're public meetings. Yes, councillors can serve on the committee. I'm waiting to hear back from councillors who would like to serve on the committee. So please respond if that is your desire. Thank you.
I would love to be. I will respond. And to Councillor Melendez, I apologize if you're offended. It was no intentional insult to the committee at all. I think other meetings have been meeting during COVID and I just felt that we have not been getting a lot of reporting from it. And I, the direction and all of that has not been fully out. That's, that's what I'm referring to. What the work that they're doing is one thing, but what we've gotten, I haven't seen an official report per se. Thank you.
And I see no other hands. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Obrey, seconded? Seconded by Bumgardner. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye. Oh, Councillor Hede is back. Opposed? Bordelain, abstentions? Okay, so we have two, four, six, eight, seven in favor, one opposed, Bordelain, zero abstention. The meeting is adjourned at 10:22. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for the people listening at home. Everybody be well, stay safe.